Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, October 12th. We've got a great day ahead of us between this workshop and the city commission meeting. I want to thank everybody for joining us today on this very important topic. We've got a lot of work to do, so let's jump right in. Oh, Commissioner Porter. Oh, okay. Excellent. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We believe we've got a full discussion today, and we've put an agenda in your material, kind of a run of program, to make sure we kind of move through this, understanding that we expect discussion and Q and A, and we wanted to make sure we gave you time to do that. This is a follow-on conversation from your last commission meeting where you had a lengthy conversation about gun violence, of course. In the last budget cycle, the city commission, you appropriated a million dollars. This discussion is how to execute that, and it's been very full and fruitful to this point. And so this is a single-issue workshop. Today, you asked specifically to dive deeper into GVI, the Group Violence Intervention. You've heard some about that. We've given you information in the previous agenda item and this agenda item as background, but you wanted to hear a little more about that, as well as other ideas and thoughts that you had received. And so the agenda material that you have includes that. There's some data on other cities and kind of their experiences, homicide rates, things that are germane to this conversation. We've met with Dr. Ed Clark. He's local to Tallahassee and has experience in this field, and actually supports even the CDC on a national level on matters similar to this. And so he is an expert in the industry. And he's been gracious enough to connect us with other experts, and they'll provide comments via WebEx. They're connecting with us virtually. And those individuals, Dr. Clark will introduce them more thoroughly, but I want you to know who they are. It's Dr. David Kennedy from the John J. College of Criminal Justice in New York, and Wayne Rollins, who's a program director with the Miami-Dade County's Anti-Violence Initiatives. And so they'll join us at the time of the agenda when we talk about the GVI. In addition, your materials, you received proposals from the Community Roundtable from Mr. Whitfield Leland. I apologize. Whitfield Leland, and he will provide a summary of his proposal and provide comments, as well as Roy King, who we know is the new director of the Council on the Status of Men and Boys on a proposal that they've provided. In addition, I would like to recognize again Dominique Maddox and Givante Swinton. They are the lead staff members. They were supported by Brian Vandenberg and Diana Gallego, the team to put the information together to make sure you have what you need to deliberate this. There are actions, options of recommendations in the agenda item. There are no recommended options in particular, but there is a list for you to work from, including funding options. To the extent we get into that procurement-level conversation, we have our director of procurement that can assist us in making those decisions. And so that's the context and the background. The agenda, I'll run through it, Mr. Mayor, just to kind of frame it, would be to begin with public comment. We've recommended a 30-minute period, to the extent there are more speakers than can fit within that. Certainly, we would want to think about that to allow for time for deliberation. 15 minutes for the GVI to provide the presentation to the speakers I mentioned earlier, and five minutes each for Mr. Leland, as well as Mr. King, to present, and then a period of dialogue and Q and A. And so that's the recommended run of program in this two-hour workshop. Happy to be here today. You've got all the staff. We've got members of our TPD command staff, joining the police chief, and I believe we have the right folks that can answer the questions and shepherd this conversation through.
Excellent. I want to take a second, personal privilege, to, I believe, the vice chairman of Leon County Commission, Nick Maddox, walked in. I'm assuming you're here to observe, Nick?
Just observe.
Regardless, it's great to have you here. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, let's get down to business, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the clerk for public comment. Mr. Clerk, if you will walk us through the process, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As the city manager noted, we're trying to use 30 minutes at the start of your meeting for public input, so that we leave plenty of time for you, as a commission, to have the discussion you've expressed that you want to have. I do have about 15 speakers, including one who is virtual. I will give each speaker our customary three minutes for remarks, but I will encourage those of you who have already heard your point made to maybe waive time or limit your remarks so that we can get to everyone. If everyone takes the full three minutes, then we won't get to all speakers in that 30-minute window. But I will give you a heads-up at about two minutes. That way, you've got time to wrap up remarks, if you're able to do that. And with that, Mayor, if there are any other questions from either the commission, otherwise, I'll call the first speaker.
That's great.
All right. Our first speaker is Casey Dennis with the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend. Speakers will come to this microphone here to my right. And again, you'll have three minutes. I'll give you a heads-up at two. The following speaker will be Sky Bess.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Good morning. Casey Dennis, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend. And I have with me Ms. Sky Bess, who's also going to present to you guys about just a brief talk about the Boys and Girls Clubs. Once again, I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs. I've had the pleasure of being a part of this organization for the past 18 years. I'm a lifelong resident of our beloved city of Tallahassee. Just want to give you a brief overview of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Big Bend and our National Street Smarts Program as an option to gun violence in our city. A recent article published in Direct Science states that the Boys and Girls Clubs are the only youth-serving organization proven to help communities reduce crime. Last year, in the Boys and Girls Club, we served 1,211 youth in the Big Bend area. 723 of those youth were from Tallahassee. Our program operates Monday through Friday, from 2:30 to 6:30 after school and all day in the summer. Our clubs in Tallahassee are located where the kids need us the most. We partner with Tallahassee Housing Authority, and we have clubs in Springfield, 1700 Yolua Street, Pine Wood Club, 2940 Grady Road, Sunrise Club, 2525 Texas Street, and we have a MOU with Leon County Schools, but we currently have a club at Oak Ridge, and we're working to get a club open in Pine Wood Elementary School as well. All of our participants participate in our evidence-based Street Smarts Program. Street Smarts counteracts the negative lures of gangs and violence and our street influences on youth by building awareness and resistance skills, so participants develop confidence and knowledge to make intelligent choices. We also know this all about data, what we can prove and what we can show. So we collect report cards, pre- and post-testing, interactions with regular school-day teachers, parents and youth surveys, and I'm proud to report that our kids are having fun. They feel physically safe, emotionally safe. They have adult support, a sense of belonging, high expectations. They feel recognized. They're not skipping school. They want to go to college, and they volunteer monthly, and they have conflict resolution skills. They're not drinking, and not smoking, which, as we all know, lessens the likelihood that they'll become involved in our gun violence. So next, I want to bring Ms. Sky up to talk about her club at our Springfield Boys and Girls Club, just really briefly. Sky.
Hi, my name is Sky Bess. I've been a member of the Boys and Girls Club in Springfield ever since it's opened. I feel as though the Springfield Boys and Girls Club is a huge impact on my community because we have a negative stigma, but the Boys and Girls Club is a way that we can show our full potential, and I feel like it really has helped me personally to bring out my shell and just help me with everything.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Michael McBride, followed by Stanley Sims.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael McBride. I live at 124 Mill Branch Road. I know this might be a shock coming out of my mouth, but restorative justice works. I can personally attest to that, and the Community Connection Program, your own Community Connection Program, has proved that for years. With a tough how-to logistics, already addressed with a memorandum of understanding, an unheard-of collaboration of the major players, you find folks on the commission stepping up and supporting the restorative justice plan will be money thoughtfully spent. But from a broader perspective, if the city commission really wants to address gun violence, then it has to address the root systemic environment under which it thrives. A Tallahassee model has to be designed that will do that in the long run, but you have to take deliberate action now to triage this current situation. It is my recommendation that you allocate the monies to address all these needs. The reference to bringing in a consultant, to me, relates to an outsider who comes in with grandiose promises, takes the money and leaves, but without a deliverable of value left behind. In this case, despite the buzzwords in the proposal, maybe an outsider perspective is exactly what Tallahassee needs, a trained eye to perform a total mapping of what Tallahassee has to leverage on what Tallahassee needs. But this will only work for Tallahassee if a consultant understands and can work around the existing mistrust of the system by our grassroots organizations. A total mapping requires all of the community to be involved. But such a process takes time, and action cannot be delayed. Addressing our most at-risk using the organizations already in place has to start now. Back to the point I made the last time I talked before this gathering, we must incrementally increase the impact of our grassroots organizations making a difference already. So please, thoughtfully consider. Number one, fund the restorative justice plan. Number two, hire a consultant to build a very Tallahassee-specific GVI model using an RFP that states precisely how to comprehensively include all the community, and how deliverables specific to Tallahassee must be provided to receive payment. Three, authorize the council of men and boys to provide immediate services.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
But, direct, no, Dean? But, direct, direct that those services heavily rely on the resources in the Community Roundtable. This will best ensure that we leverage the organizations that are already here in Tallahassee, already making a difference here in Tallahassee. Lastly, adding the gun violence prevention disruption category is a mosque. Changing perceptions, changing thinking, establishing relationships, nonviolent communication, and the like are essential to making a change to the root systemic environment under which gun violence thrives. Please expand these guidelines to open up the funding for the organizations already making a difference. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stanley Sims. He'll be followed by LaShawn Gordon.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way, currently running for the office of the next president for the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP. The Bible says, "A servant is worthy of his high." We're close to getting this process right, but we ain't there yet. I commended privately the city manager for giving us now, not just room, a place in the room, but now a seat at the table. Now I'm asking this body not to taint the process. Where was the RFP where the Community Roundtable was able to access a proposal that no one else in this city was able to? Just because it's black don't make it right. Privilege stinks no matter what color it comes in. So let's do this right. We're going to reset again. We're going to set an RFP that's free to everyone. I know you all have preference for the Roundtable, because why Mr. Leland flipped? And did that proposal come out of Live Oak Plantation Road at the mayor's house? Where did that proposal come from? See, when you say things like that, it jeopardizes moving and elected positions because you're not afraid to speak power to truth. Oh, but this morning, this morning, I ain't fearing no mayor. Because guess what? This community is tired. We are no longer going to remain quiet while others take our resources and infringe and infatton those that they like.
You're at one minute.
See, I didn't get an invitation, because I don't travel Plantation Roads at night. I don't know why Commissioner Bill Proctor sees fit that we could take four more years of this hypocrisy. But one thing I do know, Mayor, you are right. One thing don't make Bill cut a deal. What my understanding is, when will we find out what's the other part of that deal? Our lives are at stake. Pastor Houston, just like you, I got two black boys leave my house every day. And whether you guys like it or not, it's a reality when white boys leave their houses.
You're at three minutes.
And I'm sick and tired of sick and tired. And this is a brother on the karma, whether you like it or not.
Thank you very much.
God's favor ain't fair. He said I had 30 seconds. You cut me off early.
No, sir. I advised you when you had one minute, and then I advised you at three. I apologize if there's a misunderstanding.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is LaShawn Gordon, followed by James Houston.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody. LaShawn Gordon, 2477 Tim Gamble Place. So I have worked with at-promise kids for 18 years, two years in foster care and 15 and a half years at a school for at-risk girls. And what I want to say today is, there is no one set approach to dealing with gun violence, and it's just not an issue for men and boys. It's an issue for girls and women also. And what I want to impress upon you all is that we do not need to rush this process. There are a lot of people that work with kids in this community. There are a lot of people work with what I call kids in the transition state, independent living state, which are those that are ages 16 to 24. And we want to create something in this community that is not just going to be a quick fix. We want a solution. We want something that's going to stick, and so that we can impact change and change for many years to come. So what I'm asking is that we will look at option seven, slow down, and make sure that everybody is involved in this process, and that we create whatever we do that is equitable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. James Houston. He'll be followed by Amber Tynan.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is James Houston. My address is 3113 May Road here in Tallahassee, Florida. I'm the pastor of Bethelonia AME Church located in our city. My congregation is a member of the Capital Area Justice Ministry. And I, like most of you, probably affected by gun violence somewhere in your life. My experience is, I had a cousin when I was in, when we were in about 10th grade, get killed by gun violence. It was really, it had a real effect on me, and I've always remembered it. And I'm concerned about gun violence in our city, concerned enough to try to do something about it. And here we are at another meeting. We're going to hear what everybody has to say about it, but I'm going to stand firm on what we initially presented at the Nehemiah Action and what the commissioners agreed to. But I'll get into that a little later. I have a congregation members who live in the bond community in various other areas around Tallahassee, and gun violence has affected their families as well. Our city has experienced high gun violence rates since 2014, averaging 70 shootings per year over that time. But this year, it has jumped to 91 shootings. It is time, Tallahassee, to do something different. Gun violence is perpetrated by a small number of young men, ages 15 to 29. These young men and their potential victims deserve a second chance. Anybody ever had a second chance? I know I haven't had many chances. We can stop gun violence and the systemic incarceration of black males.
You have about one minute.
If we implement a proven evidence-based gun violence intervention program. We've done our homework, and we believe that group violence intervention can do both and is right, is the right fit for our Tallahassee. That's why we're excited about that the city has allowed time to hear more about GVI framework. Today, we have David Kennedy speaking during the 15-minute GVI portion of the agenda. David Kennedy is the director of the National Network of Safe Communities at John J. College. He pioneered Operation Cease Fire homicide prevention strategy in Boston in the 1990s. He has worked with numerous cities and states, created the Focus Deterrence Intervention Framework, and developed interventions focused on group and gang violence.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Gun violence, individual violence, individual violent offenders.
Thank you, Reverend.
Inmate-partner violence, street drug markets, opioid markets, prison safety, and other public safety issues. Our second speaker is Wayne Rollins.
Please wrap up your comments, Reverend.
We done?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. Thank you very much.
Amber Tynan.
We know how the preachers are.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Amber Tynan, 2477 Tim Gamble Place. Mayor, commissioners, appointed officials. I represent United Partners for Human Services. We are a membership organization of over 200 human service agencies here in Tallahassee with a longstanding partnership with both the city and county to ensure the agencies that you fund through the CHSP and bridge process have adequate capacity. We all know gun violence is a multifaceted challenge, and that demands a holistic set of solutions to stop the cycles of death. We know gun violence is the root of many things: incoming inequality, poverty, homelessness, substance abuse, domestic violence, lack of educational access, underfunded public and human services. Therefore, triaging symptoms of gun violence alone won't solve our violence problems. So until we take a holistic approach that addresses human behavior and the circumstances that contribute to gun violence, we are destined to keep repeating the cycles of death. We encourage you to consider option seven, to really take your time to decide and understand how this funding will and will be used to make the greatest impact. But understanding that, and in the event that you make a decision today, we would support the creation of a 12th category as part of the CHSP process for ending gun violence, which we believe would ensure a holistic approach to addressing this growing epidemic. Additionally, we would ask for your consideration to consider funding for the bridge program that would allow smaller grassroots organizations that maybe aren't ready for CHSP to have the opportunity to compete for funding. UPHS has remained a strong advocate in maintaining the integrity of the CHSP process, and you may recall in June of this year, you approved Policy 250, which would prevent any human service agency that would be eligible for CHSP or Bridge to bypass that process to seek funding for approval. Our human service agencies are boots on the ground every day, working with our neighbors and their families to ensure they're supported, oftentimes the only ones giving a voice to those closest to the pain every day of gun violence. We are equipped to address gun violence with adequate resources and coordination, and with that comes the need for adequate planning and financial support. You may also recall CHSP added the outcome performance measures this year, which allows for expanded ROI on public resources while enhancing the capacity of our agencies to demonstrate the success of their programming. This, coupled with coordination and collaboration of other CHSP-funded agencies and bridge-funded agencies, can allow us to access state and federal dollars, which will go a lot further than any one program alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kelly Adi, followed by Jessica Yury.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm happy to be here. I'm Kelly Adi. I'm the executive director of the Oasis Center for Women and Girls. It's indisputable that men and boys commit more violent crimes and more crimes involving girls than their female counterparts. It is right and logical that boys and men have the strongest focus for the funding, but that's only one part of the picture. Girls also use guns. In the Second Judicial Circuit, 9% of weapon arrests in 2020 were for juvenile girls. 12.5% of arrests for armed robbery were girls. 24% of aggravated assault and battery offenses were committed by girls. 13% of felony drug arrests were girls. The impact of family makeup is also an important consideration. 77% of the children in Leon County live below the Alice poverty threshold, and the greatest percentage of people living in poverty are single mothers with children. 76% of offenders of homicide in the Anatomy of Homicide report were living with a single parent, and 90% of all single-parent households in Leon County are headed by women. Girls and women are victimized primarily by men and boys, often involving firearms, and a significant percentage of the conflicts between men and boys is about women and girls. I'm thrilled that we're focusing on reducing gun violence in Leon County and 100% recognize that the greatest need is to focus on funding gender-responsive services for boys and men. However, we can't solve this community problem by ignoring a percentage of the population involved or the significant ancillary conditions that contribute to the problem. Unless your decision involves expectations that some of the funding will be directed to women and girls-serving organizations, we will be missing an important piece of the puzzle. I believe that all it's really going to take is an indication from the commission that you want a portion of the money to go to local organizations who can complete and apply for the funding, and that you recognize that women and girls have a relationship to the gun violence issue in the town.
You're at one minute.
My intention is not to distract or detract from the focus on men and boys at all. It's not my intention to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam public defender, I apologize. I did not see you earlier with us, or else I would have recognized you as an elected official. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jessica Yury. I'm the public defender here in the Second Judicial Circuit. My address is the courthouse. That's where I live. I came over here from court this morning, and I think that that echoes truly how important this issue is for us. And as the office that represents the majority of people that have been arrested, accused in this circuit, we have an intimate knowledge of what is happening to children in our community. I cannot stress enough, and I echo very much, the plan to slow this down so that we can truly see what community resources are working, because I can assure you, while I recognize the need for public safety, because the children we represent and the adults we represent have also been victimized, we have to acknowledge and agree to do things differently in the criminal justice system. I appreciate law enforcement's perspective, but I think we are absolutely doing a disservice if we do not acknowledge the defense perspective here, which is those that are representing the children in our system. I know, most people know, I specifically took on direct-file children. I represent children who are being charged as adults in this system, right? Which is a punitive process. Not only do we know that it doesn't promote public safety, but it also puts these kids at substantial risk for physical and sexual abuse while incarcerated, but also to reoffend, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid here. I want to encourage you all to come to the courthouse with me, to come sit in court, to watch these dockets, to see who's being prosecuted, who's being charged, and what the outcomes are there. I know wholeheartedly, from talking to children and young adults and their parents, they have been victimized and traumatized. The adverse childhood experiences that we see every single day are palpable, and when people then act in a way that we should expect and anticipate from their trauma, we have to be willing to acknowledge that in the system with alternatives. Of course, there has to be consequences. Of course, we want to encourage public safety. I want my clients to be safe in their homes. However, this way of continuing to do things, of just putting people in jail and prison, is simply not having a positive outcome, and I think we see that now from years of doing that. Before being the elected public defender, I was a line public defender. I have been in this I have been in this courthouse for over a decade, representing the people who've been arrested.
You're at about thirty seconds.
Thank you. So I want to make sure that as we go through this process, A, I'm here and available. I would truly appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions that you all have. But most importantly, please come to the courthouse with me and C, how we are handling these cases in the courtroom, and if there is a willingness to do things differently. I hope that there is, and I look forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker is Warren Cave, followed by Dan Kahn. And I know it's Warren. I may have gotten the last name incorrect.
No, Mr. Cave is coming. He's right behind you.
My name, my name is Warren Cave, eighty-eight thirty Flicker Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm the founder of the Clean Start Initiative. I assist people with obtaining a clean start in life, impact their family, community, nation, and eventually the world. I really signed the paper, but I was coming up, but anyway, I'm glad I am here. I am a person that did four years in the tenth grade, graduated in prison in nineteen-eighty-nine. Got seven years of theology. I have a master's in theology, seven years. I came here in two thousand, working with mothers in crisis. I've walked the streets at night, a lot. You'll see me at Waffle House or somewhere, talking to somebody on crack, hair around like I used to be homeless, and weeping comes in the nighttime. Joy comes in the morning. There's so much going on. I commend, I don't have a problem with, I haven't been in a lot of meetings, so I'm just here. I commend y'all with what y'all trying to do, and I commend people for trying to have things in a different order. One thing I would say, because I came up here, at five-thirty and six o'clock, when officials are off and agencies close, what are we doing between six PM and six AM? Weeping at night. Lot of things are happening at night that's causing an effect in the morning. Let's get to the point where we can put a stop to some of these things at night. I commend y'all. I'm just here to try to make this a better city and a better county. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please. Dan Kahn, he'll be followed by Weezer Kufu.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Kahn, nineteen-sixteen South Meridian Street. I, for five years, was a case manager at the Community Connections Restorative Justice Program for the city. Last year, I left the staff, and I'm still an active volunteer with that program. I'm also a co-facilitator with the Back on Track program, which has been working in cooperation with the Sheriff's Office for about the last three and a half years. And I'm also the co-director of the Florida Restorative Justice Association. Much of what I had to say has already been covered by, by several people, including Michael McBride, and I wanted to underline a few of my takeaways from the Anatomy of the Homicide, Anatomy of a Homicide Report. Some of those, as I said, were covered in terms of the need for a community process that was highly inclusive, including directly impacted individuals and communities in the process to identify what needs to happen and what are the resources available to make it happen, while I also, of course, identify and relate to the strong desire for urgent, quick action as well, and for supporting the things that are already working in our community. One other thing that, that I did not here mention as much was that I saw the report cited that eighty-five percent of the studied population had been suspended or expelled from schools, and that a majority were, had participated in an alternative school. I want to bring the community's attention to what I see as a tremendous resource in our Second Chance and Success Academies. Amy Alves, the former principal of Heritage Trail School, I've seen her and the staff there have tremendous success and progress in implementing in-school restorative practices and social-emotional learning technologies. It's a, a whole-school approach, where everyone from, from the law enforcement officer who's there on staff, to the custodians, to the teachers, know how to connect with students on the level of feelings and needs and current situations. So Amy Alves is taking over of the Decasvini Center in January. As I understand it, I encourage folks to give a lot of support to what she brings to the table there in stopping the flow of violence early on. I also see the need for wraparound services, that we're not just talking about addressing problems and behavior and discipline. That report also pointed to economic issues that factor into the rates of violence. So I, I see the need for career counseling, mentorship programs, family support at various levels. So again, much of what I've wanted to share was already been shared. I want to commend and appreciate.
You're at thirty seconds.
Thank you, the care, dedication, awareness, and diligence that I hear in this room. I appreciate this community for taking these actions and moving this direction. Thank you.
Weezer Kufu, and then Sharon O'Fwaney. And Mayor, that'll take us to our thirty-minute window. We do have a couple others if, if you want to take them.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Weezer Kufu, six-one-four Howard Avenue. I was born and raised here in the south side of Tallahassee. Come from a family of nine kids, six boys, three girls. My father and mother never finished high school. My mother taught us English, my father taught us math. All my brothers, these are general contractors, engineers, that they run their own business. I, I ran for office three times here in Tallahassee, because I had the vision, vision to change the direction of the black community. Although I was not elected, the vision still lives on. I have articles that I run on the radio, or ask that run on radio, and basically, it's telling the truth about what's going on. We know racism is still well alive here in Tallahassee, in this country. But the black community needs to fill its head out of sin. There's a lot of things that are going on in the black community that we try to hide behind race system. One of the articles I run is that when a white cop shoots a black kid, all the emotions in the hell break loose. The menaces, the politicians, the community leaders pack the church for a photo op, why black kids are killing each other like animals in the street, and nothing is being said. Another thing, the clique. The clique controlled the black community. White power and white money controlled the clique. This has been an unwritten law since slavery. This is why the black community cannot grow. We have a lot of people, such as myself, work hard, leaders down, spending money. In, in two thousand, I started vocations in trade school, just to try to teach kids, get them off the street, teaching them trade. And a lot of these kids, all they want is somebody to show them affection, show them love. They would do what you ask them to do. I have no problem with them. Right now, I, I've met some of the officers. I got a police.
You have about one minute.
I went down yesterday. I've been broke in over twenty times. A guy tried to rob me at gunpoint. I stuck a knife in his chest, going to get off my property. I'm at ground zero, and nothing's been done. I never have got a penny from the city, the state, the county, federal government, nowhere. And, and, and I see all y'all political signs at my place, but nobody come to me and say, "How can we help you? What can we do to, to work with the crimes coming through here?" Crime was one of the main things I ran on when I was running for office. That's twenty years ago, and look how it's expanded now. You know, it, we got to get real. You got to deal with the real people, people who really care. And then, for me, I have, I have a book coming out, and the name of the book is A Vision From the Ancient World to Resurrect the Black Community Today, A Vision of Self-Governance.
You're at three minutes.
When I was out, I ran into a governor. I gave him a copy, I gave him my name, asked him whether he'd read the book. He took the book, he, he wrote me back, "See, I, I think this is a good vision." But because of the clique, I went in the power structure, they just negated me. They pushed, pushed me out.
Thank you.
But I asked you to come and talk with me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor next is Sharon O'Fwaney. She will fill the thirty-minute time that we had allotted if you want to keep the remainder of your time for your commission discussion.
Good morning. I'm Sharon O'Fwaney. I'm in nineteen-hundred Vine Land Lane. With me this morning is the President of the Big Ben Crime Stoppers Organization, Ms. Linda Nelson. We also have another board member here with us, Mr. Gil Barnes, who is an administrator with the Department of Health. Mr. Barnes will have a comment, and then I'll tell you more about why we're here and what we're asking for.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gil Barnes of ten-seventy-seven High Meadow Drive of Tallahassee, Florida. I have thirty-one years of state government involvement as a servant leader. Six of those years I spent as the Victim Services Administrator with the Department of Corrections, so I know a little bit about crime and victimization. Five of those years also spent on the legislative-created Florida Council on the Social Status of Black Men and Boys, where we also address gun violence. I would like to commend you on bringing additional resources to this issue of gun violence. I believe that Crime Stoppers is a grassroots program that can assist in this endeavor. We want to be a part of the initiative, as Crime Stoppers is a, an opportunity to prevent crime, to report crime in every community, especially those in the most vulnerable communities around here in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Again, Crime Stoppers, as he has indicated, is a citizens-driven prevention reporting initiative. Often, we are thought of as being law enforcement. People think that I'm a part of law enforcement, and, and that the organization is located in law enforcement. When in fact, we are a not-for-profit organization, a five oh one C three. We are a significant partner with law enforcement. They know our brand. They trust our brand. They trust us. Our statistics show that we are effective in solving crimes. When law enforcement looks to solve a crime, they include a call to action, and that call to action is usually call Crime Stoppers. We come easily to mind with them. We come, they think of us often when they're thinking about solving a crime. Well, we want to have that same kind of relationship with the community. We want to enhance our brand and build trust with the community, the people, just as this program is about getting closer to the people. We want to be closer to the people. If we become a significant partner with the community, we can make a difference in this effort to address gun violence and its root causes.
You have twenty or thirty seconds.
Well, that's going to be a problem. Let me just say this very quickly then, that no neighborhood can grow economically or otherwise unless it is first safe. Feeling safe, stable, and secure is fundamental to anyone's well-being, emotionally, mentally, physically. We can help if we can get the people and have, we want to use the funds to help build our brand with the community. We want to use the fund to expand our criteria. Right now, we only do arrests. We want to do, pay rewards for non-arrests as well. So, thank, thank you, but know that Crime Stoppers is proven. We need to do more. We can do more, and we want to build our brand with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manager, I'm going to come back to you to introduce the GVI presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, I've recognized Dr. Ed Clark earlier. I, I think you know him, but he's, he's a, what I'm going to call a local. I think, I think that's fair to say, Dr. Clark, that you've been in Tallahassee probably longer than anywhere at this point, but you spend time elsewhere. Dr. Clark spends time advising the CDC.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
If I may, at request, according to the Treasury Clerk, we have three more speakers left, and only three. I was wondering if we could hear from them.
So I was going to come back to those three speakers when we get the commission discussion time to give them the opportunity.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clark.
Uh, excuse me. And I'll hand it off, not to belabor it, but we met with Dr. Clark, and he's been very kind in inviting some experts. I would love for him to introduce them. They, I have received confirmation, they are joined via WebEx, and so they're available to provide the presentation. We've carved out fifteen minutes to hear from them and their experiences. So, Dr. Clark, I'll pass it to you.
Good morning. Just testing the mic. Again, I'm Dr. Edward Clark, four-twenty-five Gator Drive. And thank you for allowing me to introduce Dr. David Kennedy, a professor of criminal justice at John J. College of Criminal Justice in New York City, and a director of the National Network for Safe Communities at John J. Mr. Kennedy and the National Network supports cities implementing strategic interventions to reduce violence, minimize arrests and incarceration, enhance police legitimacy, and strengthen relationships between the law enforcement and communities. These interventions have been proven effective in a variety of settings, have amassed a robust evaluation record, and are widely employed nationally and internationally. Mr. Kennedy was a principal in the Boston Gun Project in the mid-nineteen nineties, which pioneered a high-level action research approach to public safety and the groundbreaking Operation Ceasefire homicide prevention strategy, and from which Kennedy developed the Focus Deterrence Intervention Framework. He has developed interventions focused on group and gang violence, individual violent offenders, intimate partner violence, street drug markets, opioid markets, prison safety, and other public safety issues. He has worked with numerous cities and states, and with the federal government, to design and implement the Treasury Department's Youth Crime Gun Intervention Initiative, and the Department of Justice's Strategic Approaches to Community Safety Initiative, Drug Market Intervention Program, and National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice. He launched John J.'s Institute for Innovation to Prosecution, now a standalone entity at the college. Mr. Kennedy's work has won two Ford Foundation Innovations in Government Awards, two Weber-Sealy Awards from the International Associations of Chiefs of Police, and two Herman Goldstein Awards for Problem-Oriented Policing. He was awarded the 2011 Hartsfield Scholar Award for Scholarship in the Public Interest. But please allow me to introduce Dr. David Kennedy.
Dr. Kennedy, can you hear us all right?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for joining us. The floor is yours.
My, my pleasure, and I, I see my friend and colleague, Wayne Rollins, is here. Hello, Wayne. Good to see you. I think we have a fifteen-minute slot here, so Wayne, what I'm going to do, if I can, is, is take ten of those and, and then hand it over to you. You're, you're doing this in, in the neighborhood, as it were. And I have a, thankfully, short PowerPoint presentation. Can we bring that up, or should I do that? How are we going to do that?
You're up.
Is, is the deck up?
Yes, sir.
Here it is. Okay, there we go. And, and who is advancing this?
The slides.
There we go. Okay, thanks so much. Yeah, so if, if we can, can go ahead. I'm going to try to be very quick here. So I am a public safety zealot, as, as, as is Wayne, everybody who does this work. I, I'm going to say agrees with the previous speaker who said, "Everything depends on safety," whether it's, it's a city, or a school, or a relationship, or a nation. If people do not feel safe, nothing else works. There is now a, a body of what in, you know, the, the current language, we call evidence-based violence prevention, meaning we have a very high degree of confidence that people can do this work, and it will produce genuinely meaningful results for them, and the formal social science evaluation record says that. I will make my way to that. Simpler way of saying this, I've been at this for over thirty years. When I started, there was nothing that people knew worked to keep people from killing and hurting each other. That is not true anymore. If, if we can go back to the previous slide, this is why. So the, the most important thing that we now understand about homicide and gun violence is that what we now call community violence is driven overwhelmingly by very small numbers of very active groups. We usually talk about group members as offenders, and that's right, they are perpetrators. It's probably more important to recognize them as victims. The victimization rate amongst these groups is astronomically high. It is a huge problem, right? The, the impact of homicide and gun violence is- The impact of homicide and gun violence is unconscionable. In the community, in a very important way, it's a very small problem. We have a saying at the National Network, which is that there is no such thing as a dangerous neighborhood. That's true. What people think of as, quote, "dangerous neighborhoods," unquote, are neighborhoods full of wonderful, law-abiding people who hate violence, who raise their kids and deal with each other in honorable ways. And within those communities, there is a very small number of people in groups, gangs, drug crews, robbery sets, call them what you will. And this is the math right in front of you. This is what we've seen all over the country, increasingly internationally. Everybody in the groups will represent under 1%, typically right around half a percent of the larger cities' population. They will be connected to half, 60, 70, 80% of all the homicide and gun violence. And what that means is a practical matter is, if we can engage effectively with those groups, we can have a rapid and large impact on the violence. If we can go ahead. The fact that these are groups really matters. If you have two groups in the community, they are in vendetta, they're beefing, which is very common. One of your previous speakers said what we're doing in locking people up is not working. That's absolutely right. And that is partly because if we, say, arrest the last shooter on each side, two people go to prison, those homicides are cleared, the groups in the community are still there, the vendetta, the beef is still there, the violence will continue. This is largely not about making money. Somebody earlier said, "Often over romantic interest." That's right. It's girl, boy, respect, disrespect, old arguments. And within that, there is an extraordinarily small number of people who really drive things. So, we end up with 10, 20% of the half of a percent. It's literally a tenth of a percent of the city that is actually making these things happen. Again, can we advance? This is, these facts from Columbus, Ohio, where we're working right now, this just shows how extraordinarily small this can be. Columbus is a city of getting on a million people. It has 17 groups. It has under 500 people out of all those nearly a million who are even at risk for this kind of behavior. And that 500 people and 17 groups, we know to be connected with half of all the killing and non-fatal shootings in Columbus. Again, enormously important problem, very, very small footprint in the community. If we can advance. This is our friends from the University of Cincinnati. This is a group analysis from some time back in Cincinnati, Ohio. This is what this looks like on the ground in any place. These nodes here are groups in Cincinnati. The red lines mean that they are beefing, they're in vendetta. The green lines mean they're allied. The blue lines mean it's unstable, it can go back and forth. This is the best approximation we know how to put on paper of these violence dynamics. It's the groups, it's the relationship between the groups. Every city with a gun violence problem looks something like this. You'll have more groups, fewer groups, more red, more green. The details vary. These fundamentals, it turned out, do not vary. If we can go ahead. So, the very, in the end, common sense approach to addressing this violence is to identify the groups, talk to them. We have to be in relationship with these groups. GVI organizes people already working on these issues in the community to bring them into direct contact with the groups and say, "There's right, there's wrong. This is what the community expects and doesn't expect," what we call the moral voice of the community. There is an unconditional offer of support for anybody who wants it, beginning with safety, and then any other kind of granular support that we can offer. And people have to understand that pushed far enough, there have to be actual consequences for this extreme violence. And to what many folks said earlier in the testimony, this is not a program. Anybody who does this, any city that does it, has to make it work for that city. This is a structure and an approach that any city can adapt. If we can advance. And this is what this looks like. It is genuinely, in outline, not that complicated. The groups are easy to identify. Law enforcement and community people know who they are and what they're doing. This is just talking to people, but there are some very well-developed ways of this engagement, collective engagement that we call call-ins, individual contacts, we call custom notifications. And because nothing is perfect, and people continue to get hurt, what we call police-community responses to victims of violence focused on people who have been hurt and on survivors. This uncompromising community stand for safety and stability and against violence from people that the group members already know and respect is enormously powerful. We will help anybody who wants it. And under certain circumstances, groups have to know that the violence will bring a kind of consequence they don't want. If we can advance. So, there are people in every community that group members know and respect, and they will listen. If we can advance. The old model here was, quote, "social services," unquote. Telling somebody who is at risk of their life and terrified for their friends and family that they'll get referrals to a GED program and job training is completely meaningless to them. They need to be safe. They need closer relationships, as was noted. They need trauma-informed care. They won't have a driver's license. They won't have a place to sleep. They won't have a phone that works next week, what we call the big, small stuff. People have to be safe and stable before they can do the longer-term work we all want and get schooling, get education, get work, if we can advance. And the groups are typically doing crime. They're on probation and parole. They are breaking the law in exaggerated ways. And that means that while absolutely respecting that these are communities that have been over-policed and under-protected, and we don't want to continue that, we can put groups on notice that if they are, for example, the first group to commit a homicide after these conversations, that they will get attention. If they are the most violent, the most dangerous group in the city, they will get attention. If those promises are kept, that has a profound calming effect while actually requiring very, very little actual law enforcement. This is an immediate way to reduce arrests, prosecution, jail, and prison. If we can advance. And the evidence base for this is really good. It is not perfect. Nothing in this world works as well as anybody would like it to. But this right now is the best that we know how to do, and particularly for producing rapid impact at a city level. If we can advance. And the formal scholarship, right? This is the kind of peer-reviewed stuff that nobody actually ever reads because it's completely incomprehensible, right? Actually says that when you do all the kind of peer-reviewed studies, this is the best we've got right now. If we can advance. And Wayne, I didn't quite hit my 10-minute mark, but over to you.
Thank you very much, David. And it's an honor and a pleasure to share the stage with you. And it's an honor to be here with the commission of the great city of Tallahassee. I'll be very brief. I have one slide to share with you because I heard so many of the speakers talk about how they had something to contribute to violence reduction and violence prevention. And the GVI framework provides that structure for incorporating all of the violence intervention and prevention work that's taking place in the community. So, in Miami-Dade County, the commission and the mayor chose GVI as its primary framework for reducing violence. And this goes back to 2019. We already had an anti-violence initiative prior to the injection of GVI into the framework. So, we had prevention activities, intervention activities, and reentry activities. And so, I put suppression on the list, not from the traditional standpoint of suppressing crime and enforcement, but reducing crime through focus deterrence. So, you see the GVI under the suppression element. So, the point of this slide is that all those activities that you're already funding or funded through other sources can be spokes in the wheel of this overall strategy for violence reduction in Tallahassee. You heard from David about the group audits and the shooting reviews. I want to talk about the shooting analysis for one second because the collaboration between law enforcement and community violence intervention partners is really critical. And during our shooting analyses, separate from the law enforcement shooting reviews, we have our street outreach workers. We have police. We have our clinicians that are based at our hospital, and our social workers. Everybody's on the call, and we look at every single incident that takes place. And not only from a law enforcement perspective, because law enforcement shares what they can, they maintain boundaries, as well as the community groups maintain their boundaries, but we share. And what you will find is that by improving community engagement, law enforcement will have better investigations. It goes hand in hand. As community engagement increases, then the involvement in communities, involvement in investigations also increase. Our main objective is, as David mentioned, we want to see folks safe, alive, and free. So, our intent is to connect people with the services that are going to have them transition from activities that are undesirable to activities that are going to support the betterment of Tallahassee, the betterment of their lives, betterment of their families. Miami-Dade County invested about $2 million in the overall strategy. So, you see the, all the strategic points on the slide. They invested $2 million in the implementation of that. That incorporated the GVI, the finances to support the GVI. The police collaboration stretches beyond the shooting analyses. We have an initiative called Walking One Stop that you'll see on the slide under Intervention, where we go out in the community with law enforcement, and we go to the hotspot areas, the places where they see the highest number of shootings and homicides, and we deliver social and economic and health-related services right to the doorstep of residents in the most challenged areas. And so, we're walking lockstep with law enforcement. And law enforcement, in many of these neighborhoods, they're only seen when there's a problem. You know, they're coming in to, you know, making arrests or what have you. But here, they're coming in with us to deliver social, economic, and health-related services. To close, we've seen in our first catchment area of Liberty City and Brownsville, a 73% reduction in group member-involved homicides. And our second catchment area of South Miami-Dade, Gould, Perrine, and Naranja, we've seen a 68% reduction in group member-involved homicides, which started from 2019 to our fiscal year that ended in March 31st of this year. And, you know, it's been dramatic. And I'm quite sure that if you follow the framework with fidelity and optimize all of your existing investments in community violence intervention and law enforcement, you're gonna see dramatic results in Tallahassee as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you guys would allow me, I didn't introduce Mr. Rollins, and I want to do him justice. It'll tell you a little bit about who he is. Wayne Rollins is the president of UMA, future international strategic planning consultant, who has assisted rural and urban communities nationwide in developing, implementing, and evaluating successful community relation strategies. Rollins is the project manager for Miami-Dade County's Anti-Violence Initiative that includes GVI and the nationally acclaimed Walking One Stop, which has shifted the paradigm on how services are delivered to Miami-Dade's most challenged neighborhoods by using gunshot detection data and algorithms to identify and dispatch socioeconomic and health-related services to the doorsteps of residents traumatized by gun violence. I'll say I appreciate personally the commissions and the mayor allowing us the opportunity to present this to you guys. I think it's important that we hear from, not necessarily outsiders, but experts who have a perspective on this and the ability to provide guidance to us as we continue to flesh out what we're gonna do in our city. And I just wanted to extend thanks for that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager, would you like to introduce the next presentation?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we'll move along. We've got two more presentations, as I mentioned earlier. The next is from the founder of the Community Roundtable, Whitfield Leland. I believe he has a presentation as well, if we can cue that. We've scheduled five minutes. He'll be followed by Mr. Royal King with the Council of the Status of Men and Boys.
Good morning. This is new to me, like I did this last night. So, what y'all gonna see, I'm gonna read, but if y'all could just pay attention to the clipping, even though the words are up there, but I may not be in step with the timing. We are the people for the people, the Community Roundtable and Tallahassee Peacemakers. When we examine the data regarding the violent deaths in our community since 2020, we see progress. In 2020, Tallahassee had 26 killings. We, the community, were fed up and said something had to be done. A positive change had occurred, a positive change had to occur to ensure the current and future safety of our youth and Tallahassee citizens. So, I commissioned a group of former community offenders from the Tallahassee districts, from every Tallahassee district, and we formed what you all know now as the Tallahassee Peacemakers. We made it immediately, we made an immediate and power impact, a powerful impact as there were zero shooters in the first three months of our existence. Since that time, since that time, killings in Tallahassee has declined 38.5%. In 2021, we were down to 26, to 16 shootings. And so far this year, the death toll is 16, as the last I checked. Despite the significant decline, shootings are still occurring, but we are working tirelessly to continue to work for the community, for our community, to get that number down to zero. As the ED and founder of the Community Roundtable, I understood the need to form what we call Wraparound. Wraparound concept- Wraparound concept consists of all city service providers working strategic, I can't pronounce it, but together to assist our youth and our adults in matters that, of employment, education, financial assistance, et cetera. We have came across many great ideas and some not so great for solutions of gun violence in Tallahassee. But oftentimes, the idea comes from the people who are affected the most. So when we talk about reducing violence in our communities, we, the smart and most effective place to start is positive community engagement with the people whom the community trusts and relates to. That's why I took it upon myself to create, manage, and fund various types of community friendly projects and events in our community. I build working relationships with organizations such as UPHS, Link Up Tally, the Life Center, CSC, Department of Correct, Department of Health, Leon County Commission, and the City of Tallahassee staff. I also built relationships with local law enforcement, TPD, Leon County Sheriff Department, and FSUS Police Department. I work with several at-risk youths, both directly and through organizations such as Born to Be a Man, Link Up Tally, and Sisters, just to name a few. I also, I also continue to work with community leaders in our cities such as Pastor Judy, Pastor Rudy, Akbar, Talitha Edwards, Pastor James, Monte, Malik from the Dream Defender, and Kenny Barber, just to name a couple of them. We are currently working with the Leon County Schools on the DAS On Duty Program. The Community Roundtable understands it takes, what it takes to foster positive change in our community. We have proven, we have a proven system, and it is literally changing and saving lives. But in order to be more widely and profound, to have a more widely and profound impact on our youth, our community, and our citizens, financial support is imperative. We also are willing to work with and partner with all organizations to help us work towards and accomplish our community goals. We truly understand that, we truly understand it takes all, regardless of race, party affiliation, financial capacity. It would take a concentrated community effort. And again, it starts with engaging with someone who the community, this community, someone whom they trust. The Community Roundtable of Tallahassee is the perfect catalyst for this change. We all want to see a Tallahassee. We know it takes, we know what it takes, and we're willing to do it. What it takes to save our youth and our beloved city, bet on us to get the job done. But I know I'm kind of like, far. So what, what I want to do is take a couple of seconds to explain what I've heard today, just to get my feedback. It's great feedback in the room. I'm loving the vibe. I even, even looking at the GVI, listening to what GVI is saying and the GVI model, like we already have that in place. Is it structured to the point where there's accountability and all these service providers are together? No. It, it takes a phone call sometime for me calling LaShawna at UPHA, I need such and such over at Big Ben, Big Ben getting back to me, and we handling business. So if, if it's really just of us dividing or building a model to put all these agencies together at a table, that's, that's not an issue with the community. But what the community does have an issue with is bringing somebody else in here to analyze our problem and tell us what to do about our problem. We already have it here. And I, I respect the Justice Ministry, but I'm gonna be completely honest with everybody in this room, because I want y'all to know where I stand. 80% of them don't live in the community that's affected. So at the end of the day, even though they came in the room and we've came up with these million dollars, we cannot go into our, we can't, y'all, we can't come in my community and tell us what's gonna happen. That ain't gonna happen. The police can't even do it. Let's, let's just be honest. When they try, they, and the person just like, oh, y'all ain't gonna do that, they get pushback, feedback sometime and lead to a shooting where they have to go home. And I respect that. But at the end of the day, I want everyone to know, we as the people in this community, we want the same thing. And I was talking to two guys yesterday at Jack McLean. They graduated yesterday, last year. You know, the only thing, they don't even have a job. They don't even have a job. Call me, say, I need tempo. It's, it's no, it's no problem with the resources we have, it's just that we don't know, everybody's not made for tempo that's out there in the streets. So it has to be somebody on the streets that know these people to say, tempo is not for you, but born to men is. You know, and until, until we at that place, we said, okay, well, yeah, they, and I'm gonna be honest, man, like, I talk to Chief Holmes all the time, or I call Assistant Chief over at the Sheriff Department all the time. I ask them, I'm more of an asking person now, to make sure that I can get the right information to the community so that the community can buy it. What y'all have to understand is, it's not how, it's not what we doing, it's how it's presented. And if it's presented in a way-
Mr. Leland, I'm gonna break in. I don't want to interrupt your flow, but if, if you can wrap up, I'm-
Okay, my bad.
Do our very best to stay on schedule.
Well, this is my thing. We want to see change in our community, but I'm gonna let y'all know right now, from talking to the people in the community, they are not with bringing in or spending that much money to have somebody set up a model for us when we already have people like Dr. Clark that's already in our arsenal that can actually help us do it for less than 150,000 that need to be on the streets.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor-
Could you please introduce our next presentation?
The next presentation is from Mr. Royal King. You have that information in your agenda packet. Mr. King is the, the Executive Director of the Council on the Status of Men and Boys. That, that organization, the City of Tallahassee, is a founding organization and a funder of that, and Mr. King will provide comments.
Mr. King, good to see you, sir.
Good morning. Thank you. I will try to be brief. You have a proposal, but I want to focus majority of my presentation on what we've already done to align with the proposal we've submitted. And so I am here today because of the investment and the presentation, the data we received from the anatomy, and the partnership of all of our local governmental agencies, and deciding that now is the time for us to unite and do something to have a direct impact on gun violence. And so I don't know if you all were provided the release that went out last week, but we were able to secure a grant from the Justice Department, the Office of Justice Programs for one point, a little under 1.5 million, to provide us funding over the next three years to do what it is I hear a lot of us saying we want to have happen. And so I want to kind of explain a little more of the detail of that grant and what's gonna already happen, regardless of what we're gonna do. And we've received the funding to do this over the next three years. So the, the grant that we've gotten focuses on a few things, implementing a comprehensive evidence-based violence intervention and prevention program solely based on partnerships among community residents, local government agencies, victim service providers, community-based organizations, law enforcement, hospitals, researchers, and other community stakeholders. Met the last few months with majority of those stakeholders, aligning them with the mission and vision of what we're gonna do with the CSMB. And this grant is just gonna allow us to reinforce and take to the next level what we want to see happen in our community. Additionally, develop CVI strategies that include a focus on addressing the impact on violence of children and our youth. Some of the principles of the grant targeted violence intervention supports for highest need groups, community-centered and equity-focused, integration with public safety, public health, strategic, data-driven, and performance-focused. And some of the deliverables, things that will come from this, right, that my shop and you all, just by partnership of us having this council, will do together. Conduct comprehensive planning to include a violence needs assessment, research partnership. Florida State is written into that grant, the criminalology school, to allow us to develop for our community an evidence-based model that fits the needs of this, this city, this, this county. Violence Reduction Strategic Plan, translate learning and share results. So a part of being a part of this grant is that it allows us the opportunity annually to attend trainings and see what's happening in other municipalities throughout the United States who've received this grant. So while we will go and share what's working, what's not working here, we'll have that same opportunity to see, as this is happening over the three years, what other communities are doing, and have an opportunity to implement some of the things that are being successful for them, but also hear about some of the roadblocks they may have had. This is a multi-year grant, and some agencies are already on that second phase, past the first three years. And so it aligns us directly with other communities who are trying to find solutions to the problem we are trying to address today and allow us to work with them. And so high, high-level deliverables, we will facilitate efforts and develop a violence reduction strategic plan within 12 months of the award that we've received, coordinate planning meetings as needed, right now with a minimum of monthly, but possibly more. Conduct community outreach, listening sessions, focus groups, surveys to solicit citizen community input and feedback from individuals with experience who are at risk for violence. And again, I briefly talked about the collaboration and partnership with Florida State. They're gonna be conducting a comprehensive community violence assessment, building off of the anatomy of the homicide report. So we hear a lot that the anatomy didn't hit everything. Well, we have the funding now to hit everything, and that's what they're gonna be contributing to this process. Conduct a systematic review of scholarly literature and reports from other jurisdictions to identify and evaluate existing evidence-based violence prevention programs. Evaluate the prevention and intervention strategies implemented to ensure they are yielding results. A lot of the conversations we've had have been around accountability and is it evidence-based? Again, this grant will allow us to do exactly that, and the criminology school will be how we utilize that. So we're already in the process of hiring our navigators, three navigators. We have one, a life, a life coach, and a school base will be the two that are currently about to be posted. We've already hired a community base, and we'll be additionally making the decision on if we do two life coaches or one, or two community navigators. And we will know that before this week's end, the direction in which I think is best for us to go within the staffing model that they've given us. And so, in short, the grant will allow us to implement a violence reduction and prevention strategy. Again, the funding is over the next three years. This first year strategically focuses on creating that foundation, right? So not just jumping right in, but developing those partnerships, doing the deeper dive into the research so that we have a comprehensive plan of action. And then year two and three is when we really hit it. We're, we're hitting it, we're hitting it, we're hitting it. Establish capacity to provide violence intervention, interruption within the community, enhance data information sharing and cross-training, and implement CVI intervention and prevention strategies as outlined in the approved violence reduction strategic plan that we will develop. And so that's what we've been able to secure and are already in the building block stages with. And so the funding request presents us with a greater opportunity, right? It's very rare that we've been in a situation where the stars align, right, which hypothetically almost never happens. But in this case, in this meeting, that is, that's where we are today. So the request for the 500,000 was to be able to, right now, begin to have that direct service with the youth. We've formed a formal partnership. Again, you all are familiar with the funding partners for the council. That's how, again, I got here, to be able to access those students who are at most, highest risk to be involved in, in gun violence. And so I say, instead of providing the money to the community, let's try something different and fund those kids who are at most risk to be involved in gun violence, but not just the individual kid, but their family. And being able to provide them with an assessment to look at what are, what are the issues that they have, what, what experiences have they had, and what kind of services do they need, and then connecting them to our local service providers who are the subject matter area expert in that area of need that they have. But again, looking at the services of the whole family, because you can't fix an individual child if you don't fix the issues that they're addressing in their home. And so I just think that if we have the money for the child, it'll be an opportunity for us to directly serve them while this grant we've received allows us to create the framework that everyone is saying that they want to see.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our presentations. Dr. Clark, you want to provide any final comments?
Only that I appreciate everybody's input. I'm very interested to hear more about what the Council on the Status of Men and Boys are doing. And I just look forward to a very productive workshop. I think there's a lot of options on the table. And again, I come from the vantage point of wanting to see us more effectively employ the services that already exist, and as many others have already opined, there are a lot of good work that's being undertaken in our city. And I think it would benefit us all if we can figure out a way to amalgamate, for lack of a better word, and focus those, those efforts in one direction.
Okay, Dr. Clark, we've got three more public speakers. I'm gonna come back to the clerk. We're gonna hear from these three, you know, before we begin. And then we're gonna come back for a commission discussion, and then I've got several questions for you to kick that off. So just putting you on notice, okay? Mr. Clerk, let's go ahead and get the, the last three speakers for today.
The next speaker then is Brandon Williams. Brandon Williams will be followed by Ann Meisenzall.
Mr. Williams, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'm Brandon Williams. I stay at 406 Glenview Drive, apartment number two. I'm here today because I'm happy and delighted that you all are here, thinking about not just gun violence, but our future. I'm a teacher in Leon County Schools. I also work for Department of Juvenile Justice, and I work with incarcerated students. And I asked them one thing. The one thing I asked them was, what got you in this situation? Why are you facing these times? What caused you to commit that crime? They said, I was bored. I had nothing else to do. I just wanted something to do. Nobody talked to me. Nobody gave me attention. Also, in this community, I've been a mentor for various programs, and I'm happy to see the projection of some of those students in those programs. But we lost one individual in our program, and that was one too many. I'm also an uncle. I lost a student also. So I lost a kid in the program. I lost a student in my school, and I lost my nephew, all from gun violence in this community. So what did I do? I took the initiative because I couldn't stand behind just hearing people say stuff. I got up and started a business that you may know, you may have seen on Facebook, called Panhandle Arms, where we do firearm instruction and training. And through that training, I've had young elementary students, all the way up to seasoned elders, come through that program. And they said that the one key thing for them was they were ignorant of firearms. It's not that firearms kill people. It's the lack of education, the proper usage of firearms that kills people. So I'm happy that you guys are affecting this and addressing this issue. So Panhandle Arms will be able and loving and willing to partner with you guys in that because in the schools right now, these kids, they're asking for help. They want help. They just want somebody to talk to them. All they want is somebody to talk to them, give them attention. All right? It's, it's not that, okay, check this out. It's the old saying that curiosity kills the cat, right? A lot of these kids are curious. They're curious about firearms. Well, how do we do that? We teach them about firearms. We don't run away from it. It's not going anywhere.
We have about a minute left.
Thank you. There's a book called Guns in America. In that book, it speaks between Great Britain and Switzerland. Great Britain tried to prohibit citizens from having firearms. Switzerland allowed every, every adult male from age 18 to 55 to be trained in firearms. They had a lower crime rate than Great Britain that tried to prohibit firearms. So I'm saying that if we educate these kids starting at an early age, get them initiatives, which I'm happy and willing to help with, I think we'll have a change in this community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, on a personal note, I want you to know that you're such an inspiration in the classroom. My oldest came home every day as you were filling in as a substitute, talking about how awesome you are and what a great job you did, and keep up the great work in the school system, man. Our next speaker, please, your name and address for the record.
My name is Ann Meisenzall. I'm at 2276 Grassroots Way. I'm the Chair of the Big Bend After Reentry Coalition. I'm also a retired GED teacher who has taught in the community and in the Leon County Detention Facility and in a women's prison for the past 35 years. Facility and in a women's prison for the past 35 years. Our coalition, the Big Bend After Reentry Coalition, is an organization of law enforcement, faith-based, community service organizations and individuals committed to providing services and support, both to people who are currently incarcerated as well and preparing for release, as well as people who have served time and are now living in the community. We really appreciate the city's commitment to a million dollars a year to prevent the tragedy and pain and loss of human potential that is a result of gun violence. And there are many, many, as we've heard today, excellent programs and reentry efforts that our coalition has come to know over the past 10 years. They're doing the work on the ground. The bottom line for our coalition and for our community is that two-thirds of people released from prison will be rearrested. Without comprehensive wraparound services and meaningful intensive support for people returning from incarceration, people will and do recidivate. People returning from prison, in the majority of cases, return to the community with nothing or next to nothing. I'd like you to meditate on this. People coming out of incarceration, whether it's one year, 10 years, 20 years, or juvenile, even in juvenile facilities, may be returning with no job and very slim chances of getting a decent paying job because of their criminal record, no place to live. In the majority of cases, this has, nothing has been arranged to help people transition from incarceration into a safe and supportive environment.
You have about 45 seconds.
And no financial cushion for clothing, transportation, getting IDs, getting food. Even if their families want to help them, they often have very limited resources. And no trauma-informed mental health, substance abuse, or counseling services unless they're lucky enough to get into the tiny little openings in the reentry programs that we have in our community. These reentry programs work, but they cost money.
You're right at three minutes.
There are not nearly enough, there's not nearly enough money to address the needs of the thousands of people in our community living with a criminal record. And whatever we do as a community, whatever we decide to do with the $1 million a year, the effort has to offer deep, comprehensive support for the basic needs of people, housing, employment, transportation, and food.
You're at three minutes.
As well as wraparound guidance, mentorship, and support.
Thank you so much.
One more word, and that is it's key that we involve youthful offenders and formerly incarcerated people in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Our last speaker, Mayor, is Donna Pearl Cotterell. I had told you earlier, we had somebody registered via WebEx. That person did not connect, so this is our last speaker.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My pleasure. Good morning. My name is Donna Pearl Cotterell. I live in the Bond neighborhood. Thank you for having this. There are lots of great ideas, lots of great programs, lots of great partnerships. I've worked with several people who've come and spoke at the podium today. Mr. Mayor and I both came from an event that COCA put on, looking at the arts. And that's one thing that I'm lacking, I find missing in all of these presentations. But the speaker that was invited by COCA talked about the increase in grades and the increase in graduation rates. I myself am looking at school shootings, taking arts out of the schools and focused on academics and how school shootings have risen while we force academics on kids, but we've taken out creative outlets from school. I'm a theater person. Some of you know Endaba Theater is a theater that I founded. Based on my own experience, our mission is to inspire, empower, uplift, and create healthy outlets of self-expression using theater as therapy to help people overcome obstacles in their life. And I've seen it work with youth, with homeless folks, with survivors of domestic violence. And if we're not giving kids creative outlets, like Mr. Williams said, if we're not mentoring kids, then we are missing a key part of how kids can find those outlets. They can talk to caring adults who will listen to their issues, but also give them creative ways to express themselves so they're not acting out on their peers or other adults. One of the things that I want to share is we are going to be doing our mentoring program starting January 2023, but we're looking at volunteers who are mental health, in the mental health field, folks who are in the sociology, psychology, social work industry to be mentors to our kids, because we know our kids are dealing with a lot of mental health issues. So I'm asking, when you are, you know, considering what you're going to do with the million dollars for the next five, you know, a million dollars a year for the next five years, please consider the arts. Please pour into mentoring and mental health for our youth and start as early as possible.
You're at 30 seconds.
Because I have kids who have ended up in Jessica Urie's court, who are 15, 16-year-olds being tried as adults. So the earlier the better for our children. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that concludes public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, colleagues, we're going to spend the remainder of the time in discussion, and let's see where this goes. Mayor Protim, I'm going to recognize you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Dr. Clark, if I might. Dr. Clark, one of the things that I've read in all of these intervention models is that they are, they are usually specific to an area, a neighborhood, a district, and they primarily focus on gang affiliation. I know in Tallahassee, those aren't the characteristics that we see. A lot of what we see in Tallahassee is random. For instance, a father walking his daughter, and he gets into an altercation with someone who disrespects his daughter and ends up dead. That's not gang-related.
Right.
The model that we're talking about, GVI, how does it address those types of random violent shootings and in some instances killings in a community?
I want, I guess, speak for Dr. Kennedy with GVI specifically on this, but I want to address that. GVI is not a model that's predicated on gangs first specifically, but I think you and I may have had a discussion about this before. A lot of what's occurring is normative behavior. And what I mean by that, certain communities have behaviors that are acceptable, as normalized behaviors. For instance, you disrespecting my daughter, so that raises it to a level that I can introduce violence. Again, I spoke earlier about there being a number of initiatives in our communities that are addressing some of the other issues. I think Mr. Rollins spoke about some of the upstream issues, about also addressing what's happening within a family to try and impact what's happening with a child. I don't think that there is any one gun violence intervention that can predict a random occurrence like that. If there is one that exists, I'm unaware of that. That said, there are things that we can leverage through an initiative, our framework like GVI, to impact some of those normative behaviors that exist in communities. I'm not sure if that answered your question thoroughly, but that's my perspective on that.
Well, you know, I guess we certainly have identified what our issue is here in Tallahassee. And based on the statistical information that we have, we are trending about where the nation is. And I don't know that we can compare ourselves to some of these larger cities, like a Boston or Chicago or New Orleans, but we are trending, but one is too many, as somebody mentioned earlier, but we are trending about where the nation is in terms of its, in terms of the gun violence that is occurring in our community. I would be interested in knowing how we compare to cities that are, Mr. Mayor, that are of comparable size, a Gainesville, for instance, or other cities like that, and what they might be doing. I don't think it's correct to compare us to a Chicago.
No, it's not. All right, again, Mr. Rollins actually spoke as well. Mr. Rollins is working in Miami-Dade County, but not in greater Miami, I would argue. He's working in what he terms catchment areas. He mentioned one called Noranja. If you're not really familiar with Miami, Noranja is a small community down in southwest Miami. It's not Tallahassee. It may be comparable in population size. That said, again, this is a framework that we're talking about that's specific to the conditions on the ground in a specific city. So in the event that we decide that we want to use the help from a national initiative like this, an assessment of the local conditions is essential to make certain that what we're addressing is the conditions on the ground in our city. That said, across cities, across communities in the country, the data bears out that it's a small number of folks. And we've actually buried that out with the study that was done here in 2014 and the most recent one, that it's a certain population of folks, a number of folks, and it's generally a small number of folks who are not only perpetrators but victims. And from knowing that and being able to focus our attention on that population, I think that we'll find success in what we're trying to implement here.
Okay. And then the other thing I would bring to everyone's attention in what I've read, what we've read, in the information that we have on these other cities, they're looking at five years in terms of having an impact based on the programs and initiatives that they had. So we're not talking about addressing this in six months or a year. I mean, their data is over a five-year period of time to determine if, in fact, any real progress has been made. I think we're, what we've heard this morning is very encouraging. I did have about an hour and a half long meeting with Dr. Clark the other day and was excited about what, from what I heard from him about the GVI model and certainly his background and experience. I didn't realize we had that wealth of experience and knowledge in the community already. And so, Dr. Clark, thank you for your willingness to be a part of this and help us to address this as we go forward. I think what we have in terms of the structure of the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys is an excellent opportunity to bring together that structure with the knowledge and skills and background that Dr. Clark and some of the others that we've heard from have to build a model that will allow us to move forward that not will not be those people coming from the outside telling us what to do, but developing a model that we can implement here locally in Tallahassee and Leon County that will work for us. And like I said, the difference that I see primarily in what they have done in other cities is theirs has been primarily gang-related, and I don't think we see that necessarily in Tallahassee and Leon County. I want to say too that I don't want anybody to think that this million dollars is the be-all, end-all. You know, this is just a drop in the bucket, especially compared to what some other cities have invested in this issue. I appreciate Cajun for coming forward and requesting that, and the mayor for taking the initiative to bring it to the commission. I don't even want us to think that these organizations should be competing against each other for that little bit of funding, because it's, this is not it, y'all. You know, we do have a number of initiatives already in place. Chief Revel brought to us a listing of all of the initiatives that are already in place through the police department, where police officers are working with young people in schools and in the community. I see it all the time. We've got organizations that are already out there. And so what we need, I think, is that, that structure, that base that where we can bring all of these resources together under an organization that we've all agreed should take the lead in this. And so that would be the direction that, I like the options that have been provided for us here today, and I think that's the direction that we ought to head. The one last, but we need to get more funding. The funding that Mr. Royal was able to get for the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys, that's a good start, but if there is a commitment on the part of our federal government, our state government, to addressing this issue, we're going to need more funding, because nobody is going to have an appetite for raising local taxes to fund adequately the kinds of programs that we're talking about. And so we're going to have to aggressively go after that funding. And then lastly, one thing that nobody talked about is how will we market this to the general public? We haven't talked about how we'll get this information, so if you all will just consider that as we begin to develop our plans, how will we market this to the general public and get everyone involved? I want to see people from the South Side where I live involved. I want to see people from the Northeast involved, because this is our community. This is Tallahassee and Leon County. It's not confined to any one area of the community or any one race or gender. This is a community problem, and all of us have to come together to address it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I assume we're going to go over? I mean, we have 13 minutes.
We're going to spend as much time on this as we need.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here, for the work that y'all have already been doing. I want to second everything that my colleague, Commissioner Richardson, said. I couldn't agree more. I think seeing all of us today and the commitment that we have gives me a lot of hope that we have what we need and who we need to address this issue. Some of our speakers have talked about, you know, how they've been affected by gun violence. And I think we all have been in certain ways. I've been affected by gun violence, which I think people would find surprising, certainly not like most people or some people in this room or a lot of people in our community. I was born and raised in São Paulo, Brazil, one of the most dangerous cities in the world. I've been held at gunpoint. My family has been held at gunpoint. But I think the most serious way I've been affected and what I see in this community and when I've spoken with our kids is just the fear that you feel being, you know, in a neighborhood or in a place and how that affects people, maybe who haven't even been, you know, directly a victim, but the way that they, the constant fear that you can feel. I do want to comment a little bit on the process, since it was raised by some in public comment. I'm really glad we're having this workshop. I think this is exactly what we needed as a starting point to this. I agree that we need to slow down, open this up, and create a transparent and predictable method for how we're going to include the community and what standards we're going to use to evaluate how we make those decisions. I'm not sure why certain groups have been given an opportunity to present here today and why others haven't. I think that's something we need to address, and I think that doesn't build trust long-term in the community. I have a couple of questions that maybe Dr. Clark can answer, just roughly about GVI. I'll say that I'm really impressed by the thoroughness of GVI. I went through the 140-page presentation and outline of GVI. I think that expertise matters in all forms. I think that expertise in program development, program implementation, program evaluation are important. I studied that as a master's student at the Askew School. But I also think that just as important is the expertise our community has, the expertise you have of what it's like to live in your neighborhood and what the people want, the expertise of what it's like to have been a victim of gun violence, to have been a perpetrator of gun violence. All of that experience is, in my view, equally important. I really liked the aspect of mapping the relationships and data points about gun violence. I wonder if that's in line at all with what we heard from Mr. McBride about that kind of ma- of mapping that we should consider. I really liked, actually, Commissioner Richardson, the GVI document, maybe not extensively, I mean, we need to talk more about it, but has a press plan, details how important it is that we work with the press so that, one, whatever we do moving forward is accurately represented to the community, but also so that people are aware of it. And I think that is something that I had not considered before reading that document, and I think Commissioner Richardson makes a great point. I have some questions about, you know, just sort of practical questions that don't all need to be addressed right now, but that I'd like more clarity on. So for instance, you know, sort of some of the aspects of this, who's conducting the group audits, the incident reviews, performance measures? You know, I know that you sort of, there's this working group. Who is appointing the members of that working group? Who's leading it? Who is the project manager? How do we make those decisions? Who is making those decisions? Are we going to create a new department in the city that hosts this? Or is it going to be in an existing department? Is it going to be under TPD? What exactly is the cost of these programs? I mean, we have certain proposals, but we don't have exact numbers. Now, we may not be able at this point to have exact numbers, but some kind of an idea of what justifies the amounts that we've laid out in our options. How do we decide which community groups and nonprofits do we include as partners within GVI if that's how we move forward? You know, what recommendations, if any, does GVI have for how we evaluate those groups? You know, it would not be practical or, I think, even productive for us to, you know, we can't have like 200 groups have a 15-minute presentation. I don't think that's really practical. But we do need a way to give the public and these groups a fair hearing and a fair chance to show what they've been doing and their effectiveness. So I'll stop there and let you comment. I know I threw a lot at you.
No, that's fine.
Like I said, I don't expect you to address every single question, but those are some questions that I need to think about.
Right, but those are things that should be front of mind. I would defer to Dr. Kennedy on some of the more specifics, but the reason that I asked Dr. Kennedy and Mr. Rollins to join us today is because they do have expertise on how to roll this out. I'm well-versed in running programs, managing programs, evaluating programs, developing performance measures, all that kind of stuff, but I haven't implemented a GVI framework. These folks are the experts, regardless of what route we decide to go in this city. Even with what Mr. Roll is proposing, I'm certain that there are some subject matter experts that they will have to employ to walk them through the process. None of us are boring knowing how to do this. And so, yes, one of the things, if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Kennedy can opine, that GVI provides is the ability or the assistance to answer those questions. Who needs to be involved? How do we develop those messages that need to go out? How is it going to be marketed? Those are the things that we don't know, and that's why I suggested that we look into a framework, not a program, but something, someone to provide us the assistance we need to do this right. I think we've been back at this starting point a number of times over the years, at least in the time that I've worked on this. And we get a little bit down the road, and then we find ourselves coming back to square one trying to still solve this. I think we have an opportunity now with what's happening in the community. You guys have devoted a certain amount of money towards this. It's wonderful to hear that the Sheriff's Program has actually procured some more funding. It takes all of that. There's not one entity, in my opinion, that's able to do this alone. And so, again, a framework like GVI allows us the guidance, will provide the guidance for us to pull those pertinent elements together to be able to more effectively address this. And Dr. Kennedy, if you're still on the line and you'd like to opine, I would love to hear from you as well.
You are muted, Dr. Kennedy.
On my end, I'm not.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. We are all living in a world of tech. We say all the time, you and the people who are already doing this work in your city are the real experts, both on violence and your own capacities, your strengths, weaknesses, relationships, everything that goes into doing this. You keep hearing from us, this is a framework, it's an approach, and what we can do is help with the framework and the approach. You will know who needs to be involved. I'm here, Wayne is here because we are invited to this. This is our first exposure to things that you already know inside out. And I just want to say with respect to the other formal presentations, you know, not to exclude the citizen commentary, but with respect to the formal presentations, what you have going on there is really impressive. And you wouldn't suggest anything that doesn't thoroughly respect what's already going on. The original Operation Ceasefire was designed in part by the outreach workers that were already doing what is now called interruption in Boston. This framework, in very considerable part, comes out of that tradition. People like the interrupter, and I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names, so I'm not going to try to get his name right. There are two sorts of folks who tend to know the most about violence in any place, and one is frontline police and the other is frontline interrupters. And if anything is proposed that makes sense to both of those stakeholders, you're going to be in really good shape. So the only thing that we do ourselves is that upfront problem analysis. And even that draws on frontline law enforcement and community expertise. We just have some very straightforward approaches for getting out onto paper what they already know. Everything else that we would do in anything like this is to say to you, we know that the following thing has to be done. There has to be a working group that represents outreach, law enforcement, social service providers, key community figures. You will know who those people are, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we have people, to the last speaker's comment, who have put very successful interventions together based entirely on that guidebook that your elected member just spoke to. And they look at these essentials and they go off and do this themselves. That's why we've put all of this in the public domain. But what we can do is be your partners in that kind of guidance. Local people will do all of the operational work.
Thank you. Thank you, and I really appreciate that clarification because I do think, or Dr. Clark, would you like to, any follow-up? Okay. I really appreciate that clarification. I think there has been some misunderstanding about how GVI would operate, and so I think clarity on the operational side, the on-the-ground side is helpful. I just have a few last comments. As far as the counsel on the status of men and boys, I want to be clear how excited I am and how valuable I think that that is and will be. I do want to say, though, that my impression when the sheriff approached us for that funding was that it would be startup funding. And that was clear in the agenda item, that was clear in his remarks. It has not even been seven months since that discussion took place. So I think it's incredibly premature for us to consider an additional $500,000 to go to that program, especially when they were just awarded a nearly $1.5 million grant. So I don't think that this request is in the spirit of what was originally presented to us, and so I am not personally interested in providing more funding to the counsel on the status of men and boys unless there is significant justification for why that additional funding is required. So that is where I'm coming from as far as that is concerned, but I do want to make clear that I support it and want us to support it in every way we can. And if that does require additional funds, then I'm willing to have that discussion. But at this point, I have not seen a sufficient justification for that, and I think the promise or the, you know, the B startup funds is important for us to remember. As far as restorative justice, there is an MOU that was, as far as I know, signed and supported by our public defender, by our state attorney, by our chief of police, by our sheriff. And I absolutely want to see us move forward with that and explore what that would look like. As far as I know, restorative justice is the only program or method that actually addresses the criminal justice system directly in direct partnership with these important stakeholders who the city and the county alone do not have a formal role in. You know, we don't control the state attorney, we don't control the public defender, we don't have a direct role in that. So for there to be all of those people at the same table in agreement, that is really, really valuable, and I think where I'm coming from is we need to commit to that. Whatever that looks like, wherever that funding comes from, whatever we need to do, I think that restorative justice needs to be a part of that. In wrapping up, I really like the options that were presented to us. I do think we need, I would feel much more comfortable if we had a more thorough analysis of the justification for the funding amounts and what that entails, what that looks like. I would like to have seen a little bit, or I would like to see a little bit about, you know, what exactly the next steps would be, how we continue the conversation with GVI, whether that would require any amount of funding or whether that is something that we can do in-house before we make a commitment, whether it's with GVI or if we pivot. You know, I was hoping for a little bit more information in this agenda item. A lot of it seemed to me to be just the same information we had at our last meeting. So as far as our next steps, I want to see us move forward with GVI. We don't necessarily need to make that commitment today or right now, but I think that moving forward to flesh out what that could look like and how we would include our community groups, what process we will use to determine that, what level of funding in addition to GVI, you know, whether the cost of GVI includes that financial support to our community groups or not. Those are some questions I think we need to answer before we move forward. I also would like us to consider option six, which is to create a gun violence category for CHSP. And again, what that would entail, where that funding would come from, what criteria we would use to evaluate that. I know that that is, CHSP does an incredible job of that in the other categories, and so how exactly that would look like. So I want to hear from my colleagues, but I think where I would like to see us go is to host another workshop on October 26th, and in the meantime, prepare for what it would look like if we were to move forward with GVI, with restorative justice, and what that process would look like to incorporate our local groups. I do believe we need to slow down, but I don't think that we need to start from scratch completely. I do want to see this framework, but where I do think we need to start from scratch or, you know, back things up is how we're going to include our community groups and how we're going to make those decisions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to recognize, I think, out of everybody in this room, we all share a common goal. We all might not agree on how we're going to get there, but we have a full room here at City Hall at 10 o'clock in the afternoon because people want to see gun violence reduced in our community. So I think continuing to keep that top of mind, no matter where we land on our decisions today or in the future, we're all striving for the same outcome. I had a couple of questions, some on GVI and then some for Mr. King. Excuse me. I think it was pretty summed up. When we talk about GVI being a framework, it's still using a tool, but having local people execute it. Is that accurate to say?
That is correct. Basically, it's a way for us to be able to utilize what already exists in our community in a more focused way.
Okay. And then just a side question from GVI. On the slide, it mentioned law enforcement's use to reserve strategic consequences, and I was just wondering if you could maybe elaborate or maybe Mr. Kennedy could elaborate on what's meant by that.
Mr. Rollins or Dr. Kennedy, would you like to take that one?
I will, yeah. So let's go to the other poll first, right? The traditional way of addressing violence, first of all, relies enormously heavily on law enforcement. Did things like try to do something about gangs. So if a city decided it had gangs, there would be all kinds of enforcement directed at those gangs. It would say, the violence is connected to the illegal drug trade, let's spend a lot of time on drug enforcement and drug markets. In especially the recent history of policing, when zero tolerance was in vogue, it would say, this is the neighborhood where the violence is. Let's do as much law enforcement as we possibly can in those neighborhoods. Two things to say about that. First and foremost, it didn't work, and the second is that in practice, what that meant was that huge amounts of policing and then of prosecution and jail and probation and parole and prison were focused on poor communities of color. So I said earlier, overpoliced and underprotected. So huge amounts of enforcement without the kinds of reductions in violence that those communities absolutely deserve. This goes in exactly the opposite direction. So first of all, it absolutely honors the role of community and outreach and social services in carrying as much weight as possible in violence prevention. And one of the really big moves here, because law enforcement tends to know the most about what's going on, is to move that information to outreach, to interrupters, to service providers so they can focus on the violence dynamics and those most active groups and individuals. It's never perfect. And so rather than swamping these neighborhoods, rather than trying to do impossible things like using law enforcement to eliminate drugs in the drug trade or to eliminate like using law enforcement to eliminate drugs in the drug trade, or to eliminate gangs or eliminate violent groups, there's a very simple but profound different kind of outreach here, which is to use devices like call-ins, which will bring in one or two members from all of the active groups that are driving the violence problem, and say to them, we, we will be using law differently. We don't want to arrest everybody, we don't want to occupy neighborhoods, we don't want to saddle huge numbers of people with criminal records. Here's what we're going to do. We are putting you on notice, go back to the groups that you run with, that after we have this conversation, the first group in the city that kills somebody is going to get special attention from law enforcement. And we're going to be tracking every homicide and non-fatal shooting and then any other particular categories that you decide that, that you want to pay attention to. We will assess each of those for a connection to a violent group. And the most violent group in the city will also get this kind of attention. And what that ends up doing is putting groups on notice that violence is special, which, which calms them down. And once the approach becomes credible, which can happen very quickly, the comment was made earlier that this takes five years to work, it can actually work very rapidly. Those longer periods tend to be the periods that the evaluators use, but it's not that it takes all that time to see impact. You can actually see impact almost immediately sometimes. But when, when the groups know that this is the way the authorities are going to be behaving, and that they don't want to be the first group to kill somebody, they don't want to be in the most violent group, you have effectively calmed down the entire universe of active groups while doing dramatically less law enforcement. So does, sir, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's acceptable. Thank you, Dr. Kennedy. So if we move forward, I, I agree, I think we need to come back on, on the 26th and give recommendations to what we want to flesh out exactly, and then have those proposed for final adoption, because I think there's, there's good things being recommended in, in most of the categories. I, I wholeheartedly support the restorative justice item and looking at how, how that could come back or how that would be framed for either RFP or award. I've sat in at Community Connections, I think they're doing great work in, in their own right. I, I wanted to ask Mr. King a few questions about the, the council's proposal, if you don't mind. I, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity on, on what you're working on and where it may overlap with things like GVI or other intervention programs and how you envision that. And your proposal, you, I know you, you're working with, I don't want to call buzzwords, but things like navigators and gun violence interruption, and I just want to see, get a real clear understanding of the role of the navigators that you're hiring, what they'll be doing, how that relates to what, you know, programs like GVI and Cure Violence set up.
Sure thing. So within the grant, a, a big part of that is creating a framework for our community, right? So in some ways, what GVI would be doing, that's exactly what this grant, supported by the federal government, is going to be doing. And so sep- separate the proposal, but covered under the grant is those navigators that we're hiring, community school and life coach. So those life coach navigators, you would probably envision as a case manager. Those school-based navigators will be the persons that are at the schools regularly, keeping those relationships with the administration and teachers to know those 50 youth that we've related to this ask will be directly working with to ensure that they have everything they need in that school situation, right? And, and accountable and showing up. I, I think we hear that a lot, knowing that someone is going to show up for you. That's what that school-based navigator would do. On the other side of that is the community-based navigator. On our staff, we will not have mental health counselors, right? But this funding would allow us to bring them in to say, hey, this individual youth needs this level of service based off this assessment we've provided him. And so that community-based navigator will be that person that navigates those relationships with our community organizations to say, hey, Marcus, based off the assessment that we, the bio-social, psychosocial assessment we've provided him, has displayed, displayed these indicators, right? And so he needs this level of service. This money that follows him, you tell me, he needs this level of service, right? Well, we are, we're a mental health service provider, he needs this many sessions, and based off that, he should come back this way over a six-month, 12-month period. We would then fund that provider and that community navigator is kind of the, the connector to the best fitting entity for the services that that individual youth needs. Those life coach navigators, again, are like those caseworkers and who are written into the grant to have overtime, are that, is that, in a sense, that case manager but mentor, right? That, that is based off the level of service these 50 kids need on a scale of one to five, is daily interacting, weekly, a couple of times a week, whatever that level is based off the assessment we give them, is that kind of mentor, if you will, and also tracking all of this. Hey, you, you, you didn't go to your mental health session, you have to go. What do you need? You didn't have transportation? Okay, we will ensure that you have those things to be successful. So that is kind of the connection of the, the grant finance, some of the grant finances against what the proposal is asking from you all today. So the grant is for us to create that framework, right? But it's not a, it's a, it's a year to, one to two to three approach, building that so that it becomes what we have in our community. The request allows us to immediately begin to do that work for those who we know are most likely to be involved in a homicide on either side of it.
And do you know how you, so if you're targeting 50 youth to work with from the beginning, how will you identify? Do you have a, a plan for that?
Yeah, so we've developed a, a scoring metric. So the biggest thing is the schools. That was the biggest part in securing that partnership. Those students who are either already suspended or expelled, and we have access to the records and the recommendations of those school principals and administrators to say, these are the kids that who were all last year suspended, expelled, who were recently in this school year that were already in, been suspended or expelled. They're going to provide us this listing, and from that, we meet regularly, weekly with the school board, not school board, but school administration will assess, based off that, those who are at most risk. Some of them would have already been involved with our criminal justice system, some not, and, and that's how we will decide.
Okay. And for identifying $10,000 in services per, per individual, what, what does that look like? Is it enough for each individual child, and how is that money distributed to its end recipient?
Well, so just kind of in my own experience in researching, where programs evaluate a dollar amount based on services that they're providing to individual youth, the $10,000 well over exceeded that, right? And so because our situation is so dire, the strategy was developed that if we could connect them with $10,000 in wraparound services and support, that would also support the entities in our community that are experts in that specific subject area, we would be able to reduce immediately the gun violence that we see by targeting those who are most in need. And so that, that money would allow us to connect them based off the assessment, but then also evaluating the home situation, what is needed entire, in the entire village of that individual's life. What does he need at school? We're navigating that. What he needs in the community, but then also what does the family need? And so that would allow us to develop a process to say, mom isn't working, or mom works these hours, well, we need to support her or, or dad with these services so that they can be in a better situation, so that he isn't accessing violent or showing violent behavior. Every, every kid is going to be different, right? And so it allows us to safely navigate the needs of him. And so if there's money left from, from that, from working with that youth, then we would just allocate it to another youth. But ideally, by investing that, it would allow us to go all in with making sure he has everything he needs to be successful.
Okay. And so it would be your intent that none of that money would go towards overhead or staffing? It would all go through?
Oh, no. So the staffing part, you all, prior to me, you know, made the commitment, which got me here and an additional staff member. But the grant will support the other staffing, right? So this is all for that direct service. The, the navigators are already working through the grant. This money will allow us to support the services that they need.
Okay. And so shifting back to the, the gun violence interruption, the grant program and building that framework, are you, are you going to work with established organizations, or is that something you're going to be building from the ground up?
Oh, no, no, no. It, it definitely requires and calls for a community involvement. So one of the things that is also happening in conjunction with the hiring of those navigators is the recruitment for that governing body, which is that list of subject matter experts, life lived experts to join us in that work. And once we've established that governing body, we will then establish those advisory committees that look at behavioral and mental health, and, and researching that and identifying what we have that already exists, and, and some of those additional committees. But the governing body, it calls for someone who was involved with, with law enforcement and has turned their life around to be at the table. It calls for two mentoring program directors currently serving or in a past capacity to be at the table, someone from our education system to sit on that board, and, and some other areas, just key people that are directly involved in the, the realm of gun violence. And so assembling that governing body is going to be a huge piece. But additionally, that advisory team, which will consist of all of the stakeholding partners in our community that want to be involved in this work. So it's, it's multi-disciplinary, which is required by the federal grant.
Okay. And programs like Cure Violence, GVI, I mean, even Peacemakers, is, is that incorporated into your vision, or there's people on the streets going after incidences, meeting with people?
Yeah, I, I definitely think that intervention piece with local organizations is critical. What this does in comparison to what GVI does is it's a grant for creating, I guess, a program, if I'm, you know, not out of turn, similar to what GVI would do, but using the strategic analysis of what the needs of this community are in that assessment that we will have an outside person or agency come in and grant funding is available for to do and assess what is the, the need in developing that for us here locally. But it will, yes, include all of that local service provider connection, because they will have to be a part of this work, because after year three, there's opportunities for additional three-year funding, because now it's created, but now you have to sustain what you've created.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Here's what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to see the real difference, where there may be overlap and where there's separation between a GVI-type proposal and what they're already working on. And, and Dr. Clark, if you want to add into that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to chime in on that. I think that what you're hearing and you're going to consistently hear is that we're doing a lot of this work already. What we don't have is something, a structure that's focusing what we're doing. If I understand Mr. Roy correctly, their emphasis is largely on school-based population. But what about disconnected youth? How, how are we going to impact those youth, right? Again, that's not to be dismissive of what he's doing, it's very important what, what he's doing. But this is not single faceted. There's a whole lot going on, there are a lot of different agencies that are addressing these things in silos. I propose again that we implement a strategy, a framework, to bring all those things under one umbrella, pulling in the same direction, and we'll be impactful. When we start talking about social determinants of health, and that's what he's speaking to, upstream factors about what's going on in the home and in the community, you know, I don't think we have enough money to address those things. We, we, we can address, devote $10,000 to a youth, to his family, to try and impact what's going on with mom and dad, but then there's larger societal issues that are at play that we just, we can't, we can't address, and we don't have the money for that. The emphasis here is to reduce and have a, a, a almost immediate impact on, on reducing violent, violence in the community, shootings, stabbings, what have you. You know, a framework that, that brings the CBOs are the different entities together to address this immediately with a message saying, this is what we can provide for you along social service terms, if you're willing to accept that. But if not, there are consequences for continuing this behavior, I think is the route that we should go. That's not to say that what they're doing, the Council on the Status of Men and Boys is not a great program. I think it's a wonderful program. I, I support what he's doing. I think it's going to have an impact, but we'll learn whether or not, or how much of impact it's going to have three, five years down the line. We, we don't have, in our scientific speech evidence base yet, to say what impact this is going to have. We're basically with the, with the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, implementing a pilot, which is fine. That's how we learn things. But if we have something in place, or something that has been implemented over time, that we have some data on, of how it works across different communities, I think we would be remiss not to at least give it a, a good look.
Okay. Well, following up on, on that point, all of our social services providers are, are underfunded and, and don't have the capacity to meet the true need in our community. So when, when you identify individuals to connect them with, with services through a program like GVI, what if there's not enough funding for those services? Well, what are you able to promise them in the future, whether that's housing, jobs?
Right. And so, can't remember, I think it was Commissioner Richardson said that there's always this huge elephant in the room, right? And it's, it's the lack of funding. We have to determine what we have the capacity to do and focus on those things, that we can't do everything. Again, GVI is not a program, it's a framework to try to help us, you know, leverage what we have. And so Commissioner Porter asks which specifically CBOs or entities should be at the table. That's part of how you answer that question. Everyone doesn't have the capacity to do this work, they just don't. Some, some organizations are going to need more funding, more, you know, stand-up or structure to be able to do this. So to your question, we have to determine who's best suited, situated to, to move this work forward. Again, it's, it's a wonderful thing that the Council on the Status of Men and Boys have secured some additional funding that puts them in a, in a very good place, a very good position to begin to do the work that they want to do. But it, it, that's what it takes. It takes some, you know, some funding, particularly when we start looking at sustainability and being able to continue what we started down the line. Again, my point is that as far as reducing violence and being able to, to gauge that almost immediately, the GVI framework perhaps will provide that. But again, it takes us implementing something to determine, you know, the impact that any one of these things are going to have.
Okay. Thank you. And, and, you know, I'll just wrap up my comments, Mr. Mayor, you know, reframing that. I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, in trying something new to see what would work, whatever path we take on that. I'm interested in the restorative justice initiative. I think any, any funding of local agency should go to a competitive process, CHSP. You know, most likely, because when we hear from Boys and Girls Club, we hear from Crime Stoppers, we hear from all the organizations, that, that could benefit for that. I don't think we should be picking and choosing who shows up, but if we put that funding into a category where anybody can apply for it, would make sense to me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on information overload. There's just so much that has been said, so much that I have learned through this process. So I'm, I'm just gonna, it may sound like I'm rambling, but there is a method to this While we sit here, there are things going on out there. While we sit here and try to figure out in the comfort of this air-conditioned, over-air-conditioned room, there are things that are going on out there. And I heard someone say, what's happening between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM? So while we try to figure out how to get it perfect, things are going on out there. The police are out there doing their best. Community members are out there doing their best. Many of them are reaching into their own pockets, and they're doing this. They're reaching into our pockets as well, because they're asking us to contribute. They're asking us to help, because they're trying to do what they can, and they're not just here with their hand out. You know, a million dollars is like blood in the water. It's like every, you know, we, we got people pitting against one another to try to get It's like, you know, we got people pitting against one another to try to get this funding because their pockets are empty post-pandemic, but they're still in the community trying to keep it safe. So one thing we need to, I think we need to do is, we need to expand what gun violence is. It's not just someone shooting someone. It's suicide. It's accidental shootings. A shooting is a shooting is a shooting whether a person dies or not. And we have too much. But we've got to understand, we can't just throw good money at a situation and turn our heads and expect it to go away. People want this to happen fast, but it can't happen fast or it won't last. We need something that's going to be sustainable and something that's going to work in this community. I appreciate folks who want evidence-based. I ask for data all the time. But where is the evidence-based on Tallahassee? All we have is what TPD has collected and what our community groups who are doing this work have collected. It's great about what happened in Chicago and Boston and even in Miami-Dade, but that ain't Tallahassee. And I don't want us to think that, you know, I got my head on the rock. I'm just saying, I don't want to overdo, overshoot, pardon the pun, what we need here. And as Dr. Kennedy pointed out, his data shows that we're talking about less than 1% of the population that's in this category, but 50% of them are committing to homicides. And I correlate that to when, you know, we're talking about the homeless. According to the count that I have, we have about 800 people who have been counted to be homeless, but we're spending millions of dollars trying to provide a homeless solution. And so here we are, talking about over a period of time, $5 million to stop less than 1% of the population from doing something. Because when it happens, someone's going to the grave, mothers are burying their children or families are burying their family members, or someone's going to jail. And we heard the public defender this morning, my good friend Jessica Hery, talking about this. We sometimes forget about that. We hear on the news that there's been a shooting. A few days later, the police resolved it. Let me just tell you, in Tallahassee, you commit a crime, you're going to get found. You will be found. Crime Stoppers doing their job and the police doing their job. And, you know, I know I heard somebody say the other day that the slogan has been, snitches get stitches. Well, Crime Stoppers is changing that game. Snitches get riches. And what we need to do is make sure Crime Stoppers got the riches to give so we can get these things solved to prevent this. I digress. But once an action occurs, either a death occurs or injury or whatever, or an arrest occurs, then there's the court side of it. We can't forget what happens all the way through. We said they go to jail, but they go to court first and things, you know, whatever happens there, happens there. We got to think about that as well. And we've been invited to come to court to see what happens. We haven't done that. We have got to, and what was the other, Mr. Rollins, Dr. Rollins? I liked the simple chart that was up when he was speaking. Prevention, intervention, suppression, reentry. Because I've been harping on, some of this money needs to be used for prevention. We, you know, it's one thing to interrupt and get, but we've got to keep them from getting there. We've got to have some prevention. And then if it happens, we do have to have some intervention on what to do and those other things. So I think that where we are, we do need to slow down and we do need to come back. But with this caveat, stuff is still happening out there. While we're slowing down and we're waiting and we're doing, coming back to talk about it, lives are being lost, people are being impacted. I think, and this is radical, I know, because we just want to spend a billion dollars. I think we need to parse this money out and we need to begin parsing it out now because we've got people already out there doing interruptions out of their pockets and through donations of people who are helping. So why not provide a mechanism for us to fund some things to try to prevent additional loss of life and people going to jail or court while we figure out how to put a framework up? Because, you know, when you're building a house, people got to live somewhere until the house gets built. So why not? And I see my good friend, Vice Chair, County Commission, sitting in the corner. He always says to me, walk with me. So walk with me and listen to this. I just came up with this. Jack, I know you can't read my notes, but that's okay. I'm going to read it to you. What if we did $150,000 for programs that are doing some type of interruption already to do some community engagement? To go ahead and engage these young people who say they need some attention. We're not paying attention to them. We're not doing this and we're not doing that for them. Why not create a way to fund some things? The community roundtables already have been doing some activities at the community centers. And there are other groups, Boys and Girls Club, other groups that are doing things as well. These entities are already in place. They're already in UPHS. There's already a way to do some of these things. What if we spent another $150,000 for organizations who are doing prevention, who are going in trying to teach these young people perhaps how to respect firearm, learn about them? We heard a young man talk to us about how some of this stuff is happening. Some of these are accidental. They're not doing it on purpose. It's accidental. They just don't know how to handle it, should not be handling it. What if we provided another $100,000 to Crime Stoppers to help get information on where these things are occurring so that we can help law enforcement solve some of these crimes? And what if we provided $100,000 to restorative justice to help resolve, help people understand the error of their ways and to resolve these issues and not reoffend? So if you do the math, that's half of the money. While we figure out what's going on with the, what framework we're going to build. And this, we're just talking, and we're talking about the first year. We got to start somewhere. I love what the Council of Men and Boys, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I love what the Council of Men and Boys are set up to do. And I think that we have the right executive director on board. He understands because he's worked with these young people. But along with that, as you said, Dr. Clark, he's talking about a lot of school age. What about the disconnected youth? We got Temple dealing with the disconnected youth. Why not let's look at expanding Temple? Temple received additional funding from the state to help do some of the things that we're doing. And I'm hearing from some of the folks who've been through the program, someone who just graduated from welding school. Do you know what that means? You're about to get rich. You're about to make some money. So these are things that we already have in place. And then what we're doing is the Capitol Area Justice Ministry, they're telling us to stop the bleeding now. This can help stop some of the bleeding now while we try to figure out how to build this house as we go. So I'm saying, let's put some of this money on the street now to try to prevent, interrupt, intervene and restore those who are ready to be restored while we try to figure out the middle part. Can y'all dream with me? Can we see that possibly? Dr. Clark, I know you're my focal point. You know, when you're speaking to an artist, you got to have a focal point. So you're my focal point.
You notice I have not lost eye contact with you.
That's right. You have not.
We come from that old school religion where, boy, you better look at me when I'm talking to you.
That's right.
So I watch you, watch me. I couldn't agree more that we have a whole lot of good work taking place in this community. Again, my position is, will remain that I think the best foot forward is figuring out how to focus all that good work in one direction to address this big problem that we got.
Yeah. And I think that if we do that, if we do some stuff now, we will be aiming, we will be going in the same direction. We're just not waiting to start. We can start now and, you know, and continue to dance together. You know, when the next song come on, more people can get on the dance floor because they know to dance. But if we go ahead and start dancing now, then we're just going to have more people who can join us because they're not dead. They're not in jail because we've gone out there and engaged them and got them off of whatever it is that's going on. You heard, there were two people, because of this engagement, two people mentioned that they needed jobs. A phone call was made and I'm hoping that they made it to Temple or they made, even with our summer program, the TIFLA, getting, that's part of the prevention, teaching our young people how to work for a living and earn money so that they can go buy food, buy clothes and don't feel like they have to do anything strange to do that. So I'm saying, all of this good work is going on, but people are paying for it without us at the table because we're a government and it takes so much to get stuff through to get it done. Let's open up a little bit and let's go ahead and get some stuff going and get some stuff done. And with my good friend Kelly, I am pro-girl, I'm pro-women. I am a woman. I was once a little girl. I agree that we cannot leave our girls and our women behind. And it is my hope that as the Council of Men and Boys work on the family that you remember, mama is at the head of many of these families. Mama's trying to raise boys. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Because if you got a tough mama, she can raise a boy. But if mama too tough and the boy go to school and he got a little mark on him and he shows it to somebody, now mama about to go somewhere and he about to go somewhere. And so we've just got to keep in touch with these family dynamics and hold these single parents up and hold the family up. So I'm hoping that there will be some collaboration, some coordination in that arena to make sure that we're going to have a whole family. Because that's what's going to save us really, having a family as whole as they can be.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'm going to weigh in now. And my goal is to have us wrapped up, if we can, by 1:00. If we need more time, we'll stay as long as we need. But I have listened to everybody. I had a long speech prepared and I'm cutting straight to the chase. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Many of us, including my friends at Cajun, have been working on this issue for nearly a year and a half. And yes, I enjoyed hosting Cajun at my house over a year and a half ago, not once but twice. And I will do it again if we need to and any other organization that has interest in this community. I want to thank Dr. Clark. I'll tell you what, I have a lot of confidence in you, sir, and I appreciate your time and your effort. You kind of serve as the bridge, right? We have these national experts that really want to help us or in a position to help us to provide the analytical framework, but yet you also recognize the expertise on the ground here in Tallahassee as a member of this community. So I bring a little institutional knowledge to this game, having served in local office for 16 years and the longest-serving local elected official on this body right now. And there's two things I want to put into the record. Number one, the city commission several years ago had the opportunity to take these steps and bring in a national model and politically decided not to. We can all be Monday morning quarterbacks and decide whether that was the right decision or the wrong decision. However, I had my own opinions and I am ready to move forward. Number two, I hear you all loud and clear, and I think we all agree, that we've got incredible programs right here in our community that deserve funding and funding immediately for the great work that they're doing. However, institutional knowledge again reminds me that the whole reason why we created the CHSP process was so that this body is not picking winners and losers. And so I think it's important that we stick to the community model that truly works, which is CHSP. And I have no interest in having another workshop where we're going to sit as a body and say, you get this, you get that. Let's let the community process of the CHSP process work. Having said that, I am ready to move forward with specifics today. I am in favor of the GVI model. I think it's going to work for us, and I'll tell you why, Dr. Clark. Because again, we're going to utilize these national resources, national experts in gun violence. Yes, we're not Chicago, we're not Miami, but we're not asking them to compare us to Chicago or Miami. We're asking them to come in and analyze our community. But at the same time, the implementation of GVI is going to be our local providers, the people that are on the ground. Now, it's a two-year study and Mayor Pro Tim summed it up perfectly. We're not solving this overnight. We've got to give it time, but I do believe that we need to move forward. So the question is, how do we put the meat on the bones over the course of the next five years? I am very proud to be the mayor that back in the spring brought this idea of setting aside a million dollars a year for the next five years for sustainable programming for gun violence interruption in our community. And I think that we're taking major steps in the right direction. The proposal that we have before us today from GVI is in the first year, a $200,000 contract, and in the second year, a $100,000 contract. Colleagues, I would propose that we move forward, and I will be prepared to make a motion in a second, that we do engage GVI. And we do it right now. And we engage them to the tune of their proposed contract of $200,000 this fiscal year, year one of our five-year commitment, and to $100,000 in year two. That gives them 18 to 24 months to put together our roadmap in this community. How are we going to tackle this? Identifying, oh, Dr. Clark, I have had these meetings at my house. I've tried to identify every local player and organization that has a role in gun violence in our community. And I am at the point where I don't know what I don't know because I'm not an expert. I'm elected layperson. So I'm ready to bring the experts in. At the same time, I am a huge proponent and I hear it loud and clear from my colleagues that we need to do a better job with restorative justice in our community. And I am proposing that we dedicate $200,000 this fiscal year and $200,000 next fiscal year specifically for restorative justice in our community. That would leave a balance in year one of $600,000 and in year two, $700,000 that Diane. I agree, we got to get money on the streets as quickly as we possibly can, but we have to do it through a process that is fair and gives everybody the opportunity to come to the table, that is citizen-driven, that's decided how the money is gone. I suggest that we go to CHSP. We do create a new category specifically for gun violence in our community and we allow the process to divvy up the dollars and not this commission at another workshop, which would be a disaster and the whole reason why CHSP was created. The motion, the motion on the table would be a commitment to the GVI proposal for this fiscal year to the tune of 200,000 as proposed, 200,000 for restorative justice and 600,000 to a newly created category in CHSP for the tune of 600,000. That would meet our $1 million set aside that is currently in our budget right now. Correct, Mr. Ranger?
Question, Mayor? Now, the option is, number one, is to author up to 300,000. You're saying 200,000?
So it's a 300,000 commitment over two years.
Over two years, okay.
Yes, sir. So the first year would represent the $200,000 commitment to GVI, 200,000 to restorative justice, with the remaining balance of 600,000 being placed into the CHSP line item for gun violence here in our community to allow the process to work. Year two commitment would be the remaining balance of the GVI contract, which is 100,000, a continued 200,000 for restorative justice in our community, with the remaining balance of 700,000 going into this CHSP process. Now, so where does that put us? That means that for the next two years, and Dr. Clark, I'll be honest with you, I want you at the table. I don't know how you fit into this contract with GVI, but you're too valuable and you have your feet in both worlds. And I need you to, as your mayor, I am asking you to help us and let's figure out a way to formalize this so that you are truly the glue that's holding this process together. The next two years, GVI is studying our community. They're getting down into the weeds. They're putting together the roadmap with your assistance and with all the assistance of the providers. But at the same time, we are emphasizing the importance But at the same time, we are emphasizing the importance of restorative justice, we are putting money directly on the streets through the CHSP process. So, at the beginning of fiscal year three of our commitment of five, we will have this roadmap from GVI. We will have properly funded organizations here, that by that time, they will all be put together, correct? That's the idea, right?
Right.
Right. And we will still have a million dollars a year for the next three years committed to fund it.
Mr. Mayor, I want to second your motion for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. That's the motion on the table, and seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, and I have Commissioner Porter in line to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
So, I want to clarify, or I have a few clarifying questions. So, the options we have, option four is to authorize $200,000 for an adult restorative justice plan, and I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, you proposed two, did you propose 200 for year one and 200 for year two?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, go ahead.
Yeah, to answer the question, the options that have been provided by staff are great options, but we are not limited to just those options that are provided. Hence, option number eight is commission discussion, which is also our direction, so.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, but year one and year two would be 200,000 specifically for restorative justice.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, since option one talks about, we're talking in two-year terms, and then option four, well, and I understand, I just wanted to clarify. So, I'm wondering, Dr. Clark, or Dr. Kennedy, or whomever, so the, the $300,000 or the 200 and 100, that is paying for the consultant to come in and work with us to provide a framework, correct? What does that include?
That's my understanding, but I hadn't spoken numbers. I'm very shocked, pleasantly shocked and surprised that we've skipped to this, but Dr. Kennedy is in a better position to give us an idea of, you know, what that would entail. And if you guys don't mind.
Sure, Dr. Clark.
I, I need, I need a bio break.
Okay.
I've been sitting here three hours.
No, please, please, we're gonna keep our discussion, just come and go as you need, okay?
Okay, I'll be right back, but Dr. Kennedy, Kennedy can address those particulars, thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Kennedy, would you mind jumping in at this point and helping us out with the proposal that's before us for the 200,000 for the first fiscal year and 100,000 for second fiscal year? What does that look like on the record for the community that hasn't had a chance to actually look at the proposal that GVI has?
Everything that you will need to fully understand and adapt this approach to your city, get all the working parts identified, up and running, and we would expect with, within the first six months or so of beginning work, being in a position to begin this direct communication with active groups and actually implement the full partnership intervention. So, the, the steps we go through are, first, if you decide to do this, to shake hands that we're gonna work together. We will start the problem analysis, so that has these two elements of identifying active groups and a substantial review of previous violent incidents to identify the very particular Tallahassee situation on the ground and violence dynamics that you're dealing with. Working with you to put together a governance structure to keep this going long after we're gone, to put together the, the partnership working group that will actually carry this operationally, to identify the needs on the outreach and support, the social service, the community moral engagement, the law enforcement sides, to make sure that those are as they should be and are fully capable of doing the work that they need to do. To design the call-ins, the custom notifications, and the responses to actual violent incidents, and then to begin that process of direct communication, the communication of those core messages to the streets, and to, in fact, keep, keep those promises that you have made. All of that, all, you know, all hands willing, should be up and running within the first six months or so that we begin working with you. The, the, the rest of our commitment is tracking, improvement, institutionalization, learning from you, because you will innovate here and we will learn things from you, and one of the things we do is move those things around the country, and now internationally. And our, our experience is that with, with willing partners, that two-year period is sufficient so that you, you don't need us anymore. And we, we try not to leave anywhere, we, we have solid working relationships with people that go back decades. They're not paying us, they are, they are part of, and we are part of this community of practice doing this work. But at, at the end of those two years, you should be fully capable of standing on your own and, and continuing this work. Does that answer your question?
In part, yes, I have a follow-up. I think what I'm getting at is, at what point in the GVI process would community groups that require additional funding to participate, at what point in that process does that start? Or is that question not even relevant? Because what I'm getting at, you know, we talked about 600,000 that would go for a gun violence prevention sort of category that would be a competitive process for nonprofits that we use locally. And unless we were to do something differently, that wouldn't open until fiscal year 24. And so, I want to leave, or, you know, for our consideration, if, I want to leave the option open that we can spend that money sooner if we need to, to effectively implement GVI.
Sure. Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then the Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, because I don't think that that's a question that he can answer.
Correct.
We're, we're controlling this process.
Right, that's right.
And so, the question that I, that I wanted to ask, the reason I seconded the motion, because I thought I was gonna get to speak first, because.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm at, I'm at the point where I can't really remember all this stuff after a long, you know, a long while, but the question that I had was, in the creation of the CHSP category, then that, to me, says that we're gonna begin that process right now, off schedule.
Out of cycle.
Out of cycle, we're gonna, so we're gonna start that now, so.
Correct.
We don't have to wait to 2024, that's, to me, that's, that's too little, too late. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, too, and I think, hopefully, that, that clears that up for me, the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is that with the, with the GVI, we need to understand this, we need, we need to understand this one thing, I mean, among any others. There will be increased law enforcement. We, we, we need, we need to, we need to be clear.
Yep.
And, and know this, and don't be surprised that what's happening, because that's part of the model, that we say we want, so.
May I finish?
Sure, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Kennedy, my question was, at what point in this process do we begin engaging community partners in a substantive way? Because I understand it begins, you know, my understanding is immediately, in some sense, but then in a continued, more focused way, when does that begin, since my understanding is that there's a research and data collection period that is the, the starting point? Could you clarify that for me?
Yeah, so we, we, we don't, in, in any formal way, research or collect data on your community capacities or, or the like. What we do is research the violence, and that's information that we can put in front of you, and you can share as you wish with, with others. And to the, the prior comment, I, I am, and we are, in no position, and we're never gonna be in a position to organize broad community consultative processes around resources, or tell you how to, to, to choose winners among your, your community choices, or to suggest how you run your, your budget process, right? That, that's not our lane. What we will do is identify critical needs. So, to take one example, I said during my earlier time that the old notion of social services for this, this sort of work was an abject failure. There is a very concrete, new notion of, of call them services, what we, we tend to call these days, support and outreach, that says, the partners, whoever they are, need to be able to provide safety planning, they need to be able to step up to dangerous situations, for example, by relocating group members and sometimes group members' families to get them out of, out of the line of fire, and there are various ways to be able to do that. There need to be capacities for the immediate attention to food, shelter, clothing, immediate material needs for people who are greatly at risk. It sounds to me, from what I've learned today, that, that you have a very, very, very strong street outreach and interrupter organization already at work. If you did not have that, we would be saying to you, you need to stand this up. So, what we can, we can do is say, here's what's needed. You're gonna be in a position to know whether you have those, whether you don't, and if you don't, how you want to stand them up, and if you want to enhance what you already have, who you want to work with and in what ways. And that process begins almost immediately, and in a very real way, it never stops.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, the motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, real quickly, just if I could get a nod, or a wink, or a hand raised from Amber, that, that this is something that you all can handle out of cycle? Perfect.
Yes.
And if you all recall at the last meeting, I mentioned that all of the, the models that were presented by our staff indicated that there would be a law enforcement presence.
Yeah.
Now, will that be targeting communities, or in particular group, no, but there will be a law enforcement presence. I expect that, certainly, and I think this community would expect it as well. I noticed in your, your motion, Mr. Mayor, that you did not include the funding for the council on the status of men and boys. Would you envision that being a part of the?
Absolutely.
CHSP process?
Absolutely. I have full confidence, let me say for the record, in Royal King and the new commission, and you're gonna do amazing work. I also feel very comfortable with the newest information that y'all have just received of $1.5 million grant. To me personally, that relieves a little bit of the pressure on my shoulders to help get you up and going. You just got a, a great injection, you're gonna do amazing things. They, they could very well be the coordinating body in two years after the GVI study comes back. I mean, we can't tell that, but, but we got the right man in the right place. At the same time, yes, Ms. Adi, you're absolutely right. We have to look at the violence regarding, including women on all sides of the issue as well. By putting the money in CHSP, if the Commission on Status of Women and Girls has a proposal, they too can go and apply. So, for the next two years, it levels the playing field and gives everybody the opportunity to come to the table.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question, because that's what I had envisioned, was the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys being that coordinating entity for that, but I, I, I would be okay with us going with the CHSP process. But what I, what I want to say, too, is, there is absolutely no way that we will establish this organization and see it fail in this community.
That's right.
After one year.
That's right.
That is unacceptable, it's off the table. We need to make, because in, in all the other areas where they've done this, it was five years before they began to see progress.
That's right.
And if this is gonna be the organizing group or organization, then we, as a community, because this isn't gonna stop in five years, we've got to make sure that we are committed, we are all in, as the sheriff says, to ensuring the success of this organization financially and with our support from the community. So, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that part.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where does Crime Stoppers get into this?
Yes. In, in my mind, Crime Stoppers, just like any other organization, has the opportunity to go to the CHSP funding. I agree with you, I love crime.
No, they don't, that's not who they are, that's not how they operate. I'm looking at Deputy City Manager and City Manager.
The manager can answer.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, it's a, it's a good point.
Right.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, because I do know Director O'Fahony suggested the approach may be different. We know Crime Stoppers exists today as a complementary resource to solving crimes. To the extent it became more human service, the direct services, that there's an element of that, it could. What they do today doesn't, and it's funded out of our TPD budget, that was an action that you took a couple of budget cycles ago to say, put it in the department's budget that it supports, in this case, TPD, and so it's a $50,000 annual allocation today out of TPD. Any change in scope, it, it may or may not qualify for CHSP.
Well, what, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I, I, I don't want to leave here with Crime Stoppers going into this bucket trying to, you know, scratch for dollars, because they do perform, they, they help law enforcement. So, wherever we need to find it, whether it's TPD budget, you know, some of that is lunch budget, or whatever, we need to make sure that Crime Stoppers is standing strong, because that's gonna be real important in our community to help us solve these, any, any, these crimes as they are already doing, but also as we try to, you know, stand up GVI.
Sure.
We've got to be able to have citizens help us solve crime. So, you know, if, if they're only getting, is it?
Commissioner Williams-Cox, I would second a motion. If you want to make a motion to take that out of the 600,000, I would certainly support whatever appropriation you think.
Let's just amend the motion on the table.
I amend the motion.
Okay.
So, if the current budget for Crime Stoppers is, is 50,000, if we increased it to 50,000, make it 100,000, which was your original suggestion.
Well, no, my original suggestion was that they get 100,000, because I didn't know what they're, that they only had 50,000.
Sure.
So, I, so it'd be 100, it would be 100, 100,000 added to the 50,000 that they already getting, so 100, so 150,000 would be what they would have to operate out of.
500,000 for CHSP.
Right.
Rather than the.
Rather than the 600,000, 500,000 with CHSP.
Second.
That's great. I've got Commissioner Matler, then Commissioner Porter.
I'll come back to that, on, on the, on the GVI portion, we, we've got the KJAM proposal. Mr. Manager, at what point will we see a, a contract that's actually from GVI of deliverables and, and what this will actually look like?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have that timeline. If you take action on the motion that's proposed now, the, as I understand it, we would begin right away to work with them. The contract would be with the National Network for Safe Communities, I believe, and, but I don't have a timeline on when that would come back. We would move as fast as we can.
Okay. On the Crime Stoppers CHSP process, if we're creating a category for gun violence, could that not encompass what Crime Stoppers does in that category and its criteria?
Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna ask Bennett to help me if I, if I get off track here. The CHSP process is, is very specifically related to those human service providers. In some, if you don't provide a direct human service, you don't qualify. I know Crime Stoppers, as it exists today, doesn't, and so I think you would be creating really something different than exists for CHSP. To the extent it's not human services, it's not that direct support, it wouldn't fit within the, the, the construct of the way the CHSP is today. What you would be doing in the action you're talking about is putting additional funding focused on gun violence and prevention, that's really what you'd be doing, you'd be expanding the resources available to CHSP with some guidance.
with some guidance to the selection committee on how to make those choices. In theory, they could do things like this today, but obviously the resources are constrained, they have certain focus. This would be creating a special category within the guidance that they already have.
Commissioner Matlow for follow-up.
That's all.
All right, Commissioner Porter. For Landon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to clarify as well—I think we're all on the same page about this—that there be coordination in some way or another between what we're doing with GVI within that category in the CHSP process. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, are these two separate motions or one motion?
It's amended motion.
One motion.
Yeah, amended.
Okay. I will support the motion, but I do want to go on record that I'm not comfortable at this point giving—what's the amount, $100,000?
Crime Stoppers.
To Crime Stoppers. It is nothing against Crime Stoppers, I just think we've entered the territory of picking winners and losers that we've spent time discussing that we didn't do. I will support the motion because I support everything else, and I see that there's support for that of my colleagues, but personally, I'm not comfortable moving forward with that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me just speak to that real quick, because I don't want to—I don't like soundbikes that go out unfettered.
Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
Crime Stoppers, whether we had GVI or whatever, has been in this community helping to solve crimes for a very long time on a very little, low budget. And so if we're wanting more and more citizens to be engaged and help us to solve these crimes or even sometimes prevent these crimes, then we've got to have a funding source. I just said, snitches get riches. Well, not many snitches are going to get riches if you're only working with $50,000. And so we've got to do something to promote and to reward people who do get involved, because as someone said, if a police officer shoots someone in our community, there's a march. But if we shoot someone in our community, nobody's seen anything, nobody says anything, but everybody knows who did it. So here's an opportunity to reward people who are good, abiding citizens, and I don't want us to leave here saying anything otherwise about what Crime Stoppers are doing in our community. It's an outstanding organization that's been in our community for as long as I can remember, and I think that $50,000 a year for so long has been too little anyway. And so here we are with an opportunity to do something about it, and I think we need to do it. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond, please?
Okay. Commissioner Porter, final comment, please, and let's—I think we're all on the same page, ready to take a vote.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I made no comments about the value of Big Ben Crime Stoppers, but a lot of groups and community members have been doing work for a very long time as well. So I don't think that—you know, I made no comments and I mean no disrespect, and I'm going to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this has been a historic workshop, and we're truly moving forward. Dr. Clark, I cannot thank you enough—
Oh, absolutely.
—for your input. Final comments before we take a vote?
Well, first off, thank you, guys, for taking the time out. Each of the committee members who elected to sit with me and have me speak with them, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me an opportunity again to reintroduce this. I think that I saw Dr. Kennedy's hand up, so I'll give him the final comment if he's still on the line.
Dr. Kennedy, final comments, sir. We're looking forward to working with you.
Likewise, we have a saying at the National Network, which is that we like to work with people who like to work, so if this happens, I'm really looking forward to this. I did myself want to go on the record. Our very strong expectation is that this will mean that Tallahassee sees less law enforcement, not more. More effective law enforcement, but a great deal less of actual arrest and everything that comes with it. We'll be very disappointed if that's not the case.
There we go. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We are adjourned until our regularly scheduled C-Commission meeting at 3:00.